Good morning. I would like to call to order the regular public board meeting of Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. As is our custom, we begin our board meetings with the singing of our national anthem. We're very honoured today to have a pre-recorded video of students from Mackenzie Lake School singing "Oh, Canada". I would ask everyone to please stand and follow the lead of the students. The Calgary Board of Education acknowledges the traditional territories and oral practices of the Treaty Seven nations, including the Sigsig Kaitzitzapi, comprised of the Sigsegah, the Gyna, the Begoni, and the Amskapi-Begoni nations. We acknowledge the Sutena, the Yarhe Nakota, comprised of the Chiniki, Berispa, Good Stony nations, the Maiti nation within Alberta, and all people who make their homes in the Treaty Seven region of southern Alberta. The land on which we gather is traditionally known as Moginsitis, Guccise, Winchispa Nakota, and Otusconee. As a learning organization, we are committed to advancing the truth and reconciliation calls to action focused on education for reconciliation. Oki, Dara Nastara, Abawa Stich, Tonsay, Tani Shi, bonjour, hello, and welcome to all of our staff and public in attendance at this meeting. Representing our stakeholder groups, I would like to recognize Stephanie Clements from the Alberta Teachers Association, Local 38, Clay Gordon from the Canadian Union of Public Employees, Local 40, and Jennifer George, Elementary School Principals Association. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Ms. Minor, do you have any changes that need to be noted?
Madam Chair, the following agenda changes requests have been received. That Item 9.2.2, 2024-2025 School Enrollment Report be removed from the consent agenda and added as Item 7.1 under Matters Reserved for Board Information. That Item 9.2.3, Construction Project Status Report, be removed from the consent agenda and added as Item 7.2 under Matters Reserved for Board Information. And the bylaw to require police information checks for trustee candidate nominations, that the board considered at yesterday's special public board meeting, be added as Item 8.1 under Matters Reserved for Board Decision to Consider Third Reading.
Could I have a motion that the agenda be approved with the proposed changes? Thank you, trustee Close. Those in favor of the motion?
Point of order, is there no debate?
Those in favor of the motion? That is trustee May, trustee Hack, trustee Close, and trustee Bolger. Those opposed? Trustee Bukadinevich, that is carried. Today, we have one request for public comment. I would ask our speaker to focus on matters before the board today and use respectful language representative addressing the office of elected officials. Please refrain from using offensive or disrespectful language referring to any person, school, or department, or on the personal character or performance of any individual, student, department, or school in accordance with our board meeting procedures. Mr. Clay Gordon, please come forward to the podium. State your name and any organization you represent, and you'll be given three minutes to address the board. Much, that concludes the public comments section of today's agenda. Next on our agenda is Item 2024 to 25, School Enrollment Report. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Chair Bolger and trustees, it's my pleasure today to present the 2024-25 Student Enrollment Summary Report. This report captures the enrollment changes effective end of September every year. And for this year, the enrollment report highlights continued uncharacteristically strong growth. To put things into perspective, whereas in more stable pre-pandemic times, annual enrollment growth might have figured at slightly over 2,000 additional students every year, this year, the CBE again saw twice that, with over 4,000 additional students joining the CBE. While this report tells a numbers story, I also recognize that behind each number is a student and a family. And this report is part of how we support and plan for enrollment pressures across our city while still focusing on building strong community schools. To provide additional highlights, I'll now pass the introduction of this report to Superintendent Breton.
Chair Bolger and trustees, as shared by Chief Superintendent Pittman, we continue to live in unprecedented times. This strong growth is a reflection of how between 2013 to 2023, the city of Calgary's population grew by 25%, faster than any other major Canadian city over this same period. In fact, during the period leading up to the end September student count, we saw almost 11,000 students processed by the CBE Welcome Centre, an increase of approximately 36% or approximately 3,000 students in comparison to the previous year, making this school year the highest annual non-Canadian student admission on record for the CBE. From a system utilization perspective, this growth has pushed this rate up another three percentage points, moving from 92% last school year to 95%. The province considers schools to be fully utilized when they reach 85% utilization. So this high utilization rate underscores the need for the 64 new modular classrooms that this board requested in October. And more importantly, the dire need for the province's recently announced School Construction Accelerator Programme to rapidly approve, fund, and construct a large number of new schools that can accommodate these additional students as close to home as possible. And when we speak of new schools, we of course think of the annual three-year school capital plan submission made by the CBE every March that requests new schools. The information contained in this school enrollment report and the story it tells of continued strong growth will significantly influence the three-year school capital plan that will be brought to you for review and approval in three months' time, a plan that will clearly lay out the new school construction and existing school projects required to ensure that the CBE continues to meet the ever-evolving learning needs of students across this growing city. And with this being said, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time. Thank you.
Trustees, questions or comments on the report? Trustee Hack?
Thank you. Turning to page nine of 10, I see that based on the three-year weighted moving average, CBE is only funded for 136,427 full-time students. Yet, we have 142,402-plus students, as I know we enroll on a daily basis, which means in the broader context, Alberta being lowest-funded education program in Canada according to the Fraser Institute, and CBE is making do with funding for 136,427 students, spreading even thinner to serve the 142,402-plus students in our system. First, I want to understand, am I understanding this correctly? And can you please describe any implications these numbers have to CBE in being able to serve our students?
Through the chair. So I'd start by saying that other than being interesting perhaps, it does not, that being the delta between funded students and enrolled students, does not impact the ability of the CBE to serve students. The number of funded students is derived and a factor within the Alberta Government Funding Framework, which then determines how much overall funding will go to that school jurisdiction. That total funding is then available to serve the needs of all enrolled students in the jurisdiction. Rather than focusing on the difference between funded and full-time students, the better metric perhaps is funding per student. As we have discussed around this table on numerous occasions, the funding per student experienced by the CBE just returned to 2018-19 levels for the 24-25 school year. In a period of increasing costs, holding per student funding at or below the 2018-19 levels places upward pressure on average class sizes and reduces the ability to grow services and supports in step with enrollment growth.
Trustee May?
Thank you. I think it's attachment nine, there's a table that shows the different schools, the area, weighted enrollment, provincial utilization. And I think the story this year has been overflows and redesignations. I'm just wondering, when we talk about provincial capacity, I'm guessing there's many schools listed above the provincial utilization, but I'm guessing they'd be below the actual people capacity, and I'm sure there's a better word for that, but I'm just in my head, it's people capacity of building. So I'm wondering, is it a case-by-case basis when to turn a school into overflow? And if so, what are the considerations to do so?
Through the chair. You are correct, it is on a case-by-case basis. And that is a reflection of the fact that although of course we continuously monitor the utilization rate of schools throughout the year to ascertain as to where we're, what's happening within those schools and whether measures might be required in year to support those schools, different school footprints, layouts can make a huge difference in terms of how full a school actually feels in the operating day-to-day work of providing those learning opportunities to students. And so Administrative Regulation 1090, that is entitled Student Accommodation Planning, I believe, breaks down sort of how we go about that work, the planning principles that are used to inform that, and the fact that it is a discussion and a decision that is made jointly between the education director of that school and the director of planning, who again sees the bigger picture of all of the different schools and the utilization rates. And so when we might, where we might have a school that could potentially be going in overflow at a lower utilization rate, we might have another one that can continue to accept students much later. And overflows, of course, are a tool that we only use in year because of how certainly we, they are a short-term measure, and it's one that can be enacted rapidly without disrupting the students within that school. It's the new students arriving in that community that are designated to that school that instead of showing up at school A will end up having to go to school B. And so in the longer scheme of things, of course, we would then be looking to try to adjust that so that all of those students from that community can attend their designated school. But the overflow allows that pressure relief valve to ensure that learning can continue to occur within that school without being impacted by the fact that it's just becoming too full.
Through the chair. If I can just add a comment regarding overflows in general, and to Superintendent Breton's comment around it being an in-year component and redesignations being another tool. I think it's important to recognize that administration across all levels, including principals, are really looking for that stabilization factor where and whenever possible. And when enacting any tool to balance utilization or redesignate are not decisions that are taken lightly. And really, when you look at ongoing enrollment every day, that is a significant shift that I know trustees are well familiar in the last two years. This does have a greater impact on a regular basis than ever before across a greater number of schools, and also adds to the challenge of looking for that stabilization factor of when do you look to redesignate for what length of time? And all of those are important considerations that a collective team considers and is very much based on individual communities.
Trustees, any other questions, comments? Trustee Bukadinevich?
Yes, I have a comment. When I was reading this report, I was struck again by how the utilization rate that the provincial government uses to measure the utilization of our schools is a measure that is, in my opinion, completely broken. And I'm not criticizing anyone, elected government, in when I say this, because this has now been in place, this calculation, over the past three different governments with different ideological orientations. So this is, this is simply an issue that I'm looking for someone at the provincial elected government level to fix the utilization rate. I do recall that March 22nd, 2023, we as a board sent a letter to the Minister of Education requesting two things, that we look again at how the calculation is calculated and also how it is applied. And reading this report, I was struck again by the importance of this. The way the utilization rate is calculated presents a misleading picture of how well-utilized our schools are. When I look through that list and I see schools that are overflowing in a lottery and they're at 92% utilization, that tells me that to get that school to 100, you would have to have like 40 students per class in an elementary school, and we're not prepared to do that. So that's one thing, is that the utilization rate calculation is broken. It should be based on 25 students per class multiplied by number of classrooms. It should not be including hallway space, it should not be including gym space, stage space. I'm shocked at the items that are included in that, in the calculation that should not be there. Secondly, is the way the utilization rate is used to determine funding for schools and whether or not new schools are built. That is also broken. We've had areas in the outer core that haven't had schools, haven't had schools built for far too long with the expectation that students can be bussed over 10 kilometers to their nearest regular designated school. And, and we're not getting the operational and maintenance dollars for schools that don't meet the 85% rate that's being used. And again, I looked through the report and I was struck by the number of schools that I saw below 85% utilization. And I know those schools are important community assets, they're highly valued by their communities, they're well-used, those are well-used, full buildings, and they're getting less than full of their operational and maintenance dollars because of that arbitrary 85% mark. So two things I would love to see a provincial government do at some point, whether it's the current one or any future one, at some point, I hope that there is an MLA who really takes this on and fights for this. We need to fix the way the utilization rate is calculated, and we also need to fix the way it's applied so that we can actually get schools built in our communities and so we can actually have our buildings maintained.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, moving on. Our next order of business is the Construction Project Status Report, and I understand trustees have some questions or comments on the report. Trustee Hack?
Thank you so much. Page two of four, I'm looking at the Deefenbaker's modernization. It's going to be two years in March that funding was announced for this modernization. And I'm hearing from parents, community members, school councils, that nothing visually has been started. There are concerns that they waited for 15 years for this announcement and that it may get put on the back burner yet again as we as a system are focusing on managing massive growth. I'm also hearing from school council that many of their projects in collaboration with administration has been asked to be put on hold and to wait until they know the scope of this modernization. I'm just asking, can we provide an update and reassurance that the project is still ongoing?
Through the chair. So I'll start off with the most important question, and yes, you certainly have reassurance at this point in time that this modernization is ongoing. So you provide a little bit of that background information, the modernization being approved in March of 2023, and then subsequently, pre-design work was conducted and completed in early 2024. And at that time, the Alberta Infrastructure Consultant identified a need to review the scope that had been identified and explore other options in addition to the modernization of the school. That work is now coming very close to conclusion, and we anticipate that early in the new calendar year, we will have the conclusions from that report, and it will be able to inform the three-year school capital plan that you will be receiving on March 4th in the public board meeting on that day. And certainly, leading up to that time, we will review and ensure that we are communicating this out to the community in terms of where we're going to be going with this, following the reception of the results of this report.
Go ahead, trustee Hack.
Very excited to hear this and appreciate those comments that it is still ongoing because I know visually, nothing's happened, but if a report is being done and it's being worked on, very much appreciate that. I do have a second question. Notice in attachment one, it's page two of five, for S Jam School, the notes state, "Due to possible synergies, pre-planning activities will be conducted and analyzed concurrently with the additional planning work required to support John G. Deefenbaker High School Modernization Project." For context, they do share playing fields located right next to each other in Huntington Hills, similar age. Can you elaborate on what these synergies involve? And maybe I'll leave it at that and ask for a follow-up?
Through the chair. And so no constraints were placed on the consultant in undertaking their work in the exploration of different opportunities that might exist, whether that might be just simply the fact that if there's work happening concurrently in two buildings that are adjacent to each other, or something more extreme where again, they share a same site and a solution project could be potentially proposed, for example, that would see both schools amalgamated into a new school construction. And so that's the sort of various parameters that could be considered. There are no, again, constraints placed on this. And as with the John G. Deefenbaker work, we're also anticipating that the work assessing the different options and opportunities for Sir John A. McDonald will come to a head early in the calendar year and will be also able to ensure that that is reflected in the three-year school capital plan come March 4th.
I appreciate that. I know that S Jam's funding is limited to pre-planning, and John G. Baker's was a modernization. Are both projects, looking at synergies, everything that's going on, are both projects dependent on S Jam receiving modernization funding? Or can you clarify the timeline between these two projects? I know it'll be announced in January, so I appreciate that context.
Through the chair. So the two projects at this point in time are completely independent, they're just being considered together concurrently. It is a very important aspect that you just highlighted there, trustee Hack, in the sense that the approval level that has been received for John G. Deefenbaker is a capital approval. And so under the School Construction Accelerator Programme, we are in a position where we can, as soon as a conclusion is arrived at, seek immediate requests to advance the project to the next level of approval, whereas for something like Sir John A. McDonald, it is still very exploratory, and amongst the review, there may actually be ultimately a recommendation not to proceed. And so it is in a situation that is not as certain as John G. Deefenbaker in terms of moving forward.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Our first item on the agenda, our next item on the agenda is Recommendation to Commence Public Input for Closure of Home Education Programme for the Purpose of Relocation. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Chair Bolger and trustees, today we bring you a report recommending the commencement of the public input process to consider the closure for the purpose of relocation of the Home Education Programme from Windsor Park School to Bel Air School. I believe it's important for me to start by underscoring that, as I highlighted earlier, CBE remains committed to offering home education programming while also managing enrollment. Students from across the city are enrolled in home education and benefit from the educational partnership they have with the CBE. A proposal to move the programme is simply a reflection of CBE seeking to address enrollment pressures in this area of the city, maximizing future use of buildings, and continuing to serve home education students and families. As background on the Home Education Programme, it consists of grades 1 to 12 programming that has two distinct and complementary streams, one that is parent-directed and the other that has the CBE share responsibility with parents for student educational outcomes. This report comes to you in the context of three years of record-high enrollment that has pushed 33 schools, as we've just talked about, into overflow, meaning that new students designated to these schools must be processed through a lottery to determine acceptance or overflow to a receiving school. It's further informed by the recent return of the Bel Air School to the CBE's inventory, a school that was previously leased to a charter school and that now provides an opportunity for CBE to better support students in currently overflowing schools while reducing the uncertainty created by lotteries. To provide additional information on this proposal, I'll now turn the introduction of the report over to Superintendent Breton.
Through the chair. I will preface my comments with a little more information on the Home Education Programme provided by the CBE since it might initially strike many, such as myself, as counterintuitive that a school would be required to support home education. As mentioned by Chief Superintendent Pittman, the CBE provides two streams of home education. The first consists of a parent-directed model, while the second is a shared responsibility model. Home education under the first parent-directed model consists of a supervised home education programme for grade 1 to 12 students that provides families with the opportunity to homeschool their child or children in cooperation with the CBE. The shared responsibility model, on the other hand, combines aspects of parent-directed programme with a more typical school experience for students. Shared experience students in grades 1 to 9 currently attend school two days a week, and the school assumes responsibility for teaching and assessing math, science, physical education, art, and music. So why is the relocation of the Home Education Programme to Bel Air School before you today? This decision is required due to how school closures defined within the board's closure of schools procedure. In summary, because the proposed relocation would mean that the Windsor Park School site will very briefly cease to be used for the purpose of offering educational programming, it must be processed as a closure. This is true even though there would really only be two months between the departure of the Home Education Programme at the end of 2025, or June 2025, and the redesignation of Windsor Park School by CBE administration as a regular program community school in September of 2025. Importantly, approval of the relocation of the Home Education Programme by the board to the Bel Air School will not impact the extent of offerings currently provided by the Home Education Programme. This proposal to relocate home education comes within a context of the return to the CBE of the Bel Air School, as mentioned previously, coupled with the strong enrollment growth that I would add has been particularly important within the Windsor Park community specifically. Conversely, population growth within the communities of Bel Air and Mayfair has essentially remained flat, with city population projections indicating that the lack of growth in these communities will remain the case for the long term. Additionally, the relocation of the Home Education Programme frees up student space as close as possible to where regular program student enrollment growth is occurring, thereby setting the stage for CBE administration to to undertake a series of community redesignations and a grade reconfiguration that will eliminate the lottery and overflow currently in place for both El Boya and Rideau Park Schools. These measures will provide certainty to families designated to these schools that their student will be able to attend their designated community school while also increasing or while also increase enrollment at two underutilized schools and in so doing, create more equitable learning opportunities for students in this part of the city. With this having been said, we are available to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Trusty Close.
Oops, sorry. Thank you. And actually, I'm going to start with this question because it's top of mind since of your, since your opening comments. So on page 11 of 19 or 8-11, City of Calgary Projections, and you mentioned this, show little to no population growth is expected in the communities of Bel Air and Mayfair over the next 18 years. What are the projections for Meadowlark Park?
Through the chair. So the projections from a kindergarten to grade 6 for the next four years is an increase of approximately one student per year or four students. To put that into context, they currently have 27 students, so that would be bringing it up to 31. And then, in the grade 7 to 9 zone, they currently have nine students, and the projection over the next four years is for growth of three additional students over, again, the next four years. So bringing that up to a total of 13.
Trusty Bukidinovich?
My understanding is that for the home education community, the family-led library and flex room are vital parts of the school and a big reason why they feel their program is unique and special. And they are interested in ensuring that the new space has a library and flex room and that they're set up and ready to go in the fall if this, if this proposal were to be approved. I'm not sure how the library and flex room that they've set up at home education differs from what we see in regular CBE schools, but would there be space to accommodate this library at Bel Air School? And is there room for the flex room at Bel Air School?
Thank you, through the chair. And so, you are accurate. The parent-led library and family flex room are a very special place in Windsor Park School, and these spaces were developed through collaboration between the school administration, staff, and the families there over a number of years. The Bel Air space is not the same layout as Windsor Park School, and a move to this site would not result in an exact replacement. However, there are open spaces available at Bel Air School that have served previously as a library and a flex space, and this space and among others are being explored by current administration. Thank you.
Trusty Close?
Just to follow up along that line of questioning, I have had conversations previous to even this consideration of closure, redesignation, because of the K to 9 shared responsibility program of wanting a larger gym. And how does that impact that wish list, I guess, if they move to Bel Air? Because my understanding is it's smaller space than at Windsor Park. But perhaps I could be correct.
Through the chair. So it's an illusion, is where I would start off with. The gym area of the Bel Air School is actually 10 meters squared larger. The illusion is created by the fact that there is no stage connected to the Bel Air Gym, whereas the Windsor Park Gym does have, and the fact that the Windsor Park Gym is rectangular and the Bel Air Gym is square. And so, the same amount of space, or actually minimally more. So conceivably, the ability for educators to be creative, as they always are, and continue to use that space in the similar fashion that they have in the past.
Trusty Bukidinovich?
I'm trying to understand if, I'm pleased to hear that the proposal has the potential to address the overflow at El Boya School and at Rideau Park School, because I hear from parents over and over again that what matters most to them is to have a community school. And the community bonds when a school is part of the neighborhood and kids from the same neighborhood go to school together, maybe play on the same hockey team together, run into each other at the grocery store, and when they're just part of each other's lives. That is very valuable. And so, when our schools are overflowed, it creates incredible stress for families. They don't want to go to overflows, not because there's something wrong with the other school, but it's not their community. Incredibly stressful. So I'm very pleased to see that this might potentially address the overflow at Rideau Park and El Boya School. But I, at some point, it had the potential to also address the overflow at Mount Royal School, which would have created an even more compelling case. And I'm trying to understand, is there a potential to address the overflow at Mount Royal School through this proposal, or are there other...
Point of order, Chair Bolger. I'm just wondering if Trusty Bukidinovich's line of questions are in relation to the redesignation of certain schools, rather than the decision that is in front of us today of whether we consider moving towards the closure decision?
I withdraw then. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the report? Trusty Close?
And maybe I'm going back to the beginning of how my brain works. But in the background of, on page 219 or 8-2, it does mention that in June of 2008, Windsor Park School was closed as a regular program. And so, I've got a couple of questions that are together here. How long has the CBE home education program been at Windsor Park? And were there any other school locations used to provide this program in the past? But more importantly, my line of thinking is, how is CBE funded to deliver the CBE home education program?
Through the chair. And so, there's a variety of us that will be able to answer your questions. So I can speak that home education has been continuously placed at Windsor Park School since 2006. And I'll turn the funding question over to Superintendent Grandy.
Thank you, Superintendent Turner. And through the chair, with regard to funding, a fairly modest-sized program has a fairly complicated funding approach. So there are three broad categories of home education funding available to the CBE. For the 24-25 school year, there's a kindergarten pilot, which the CBE is not participating in, that makes $901 per student available to the school jurisdiction, and up to half of that amount would be available to the parent based on the submission of appropriate documentation around the expenditure of funds. The next category of grant is the home education grant, and it is a maximum of $1,802 per student. And once again, up to half of that amount is available to the parent, subject to the submission of appropriate documentation. And then, for shared responsibility students, there are four categories of grant. There's a grant for grades 1 through 9, that's approximately $4,500, and then that steps down to year-five high school grant of $1,249. That grant amount is multiplied by the number of students, but also multiplied by the relative share of the shared responsibility that the CBE gets. So that can range between 20% at the low end and 80% at the high end. So put all that together, and that's the amount of money that the CBE would see for home education. I would also note that operations and maintenance funding is not available to school jurisdictions for students in home education programming. And my final point on funding would be, interestingly enough, home education funding is one of the few areas where the funding is based on actual students at the count date, not awaited moving average calculation.
So just to follow up, that's why I couldn't find CBE home education on the enrollment report. Correct?
Through the chair. The enrollment report isn't specific to funding.
I understand.
And so, I would anticipate that we could find home education
Oh, good.
in the enrollment report.
If you could tell me where.
And it's just, I'm just scanning through it right now, but I'm pretty certain it's in one of the attachments. But we just have to dig down a little bit.
Okay, perfect. I looked, I looked a couple of times, but where I was thinking is because of the way we're funded, we would not be looking at utilization or capacity when it comes to home education. That's where my brain went.
Trustees, any other comments or questions on this report? Trusty May?
This line of questioning may not be appropriate because it kind of stopped with Susan or Trusty Bukidinovich earlier, but I'm wondering if this does proceed, how long do we expect this new balancing of schools to be successful?
Through the chair. So this depends entirely on the future and how communities grow. And as I like to paraphrase frequently, there's nothing more difficult to predict than the future. So our current predictions are that it will resolve the issue for the next five years. That is contingent, though, upon Windsor Park receiving modular classrooms, I believe, within the next two years, because they will very rapidly, as a regular program school in accordance with our projections, reach that 100% utilization rate and will need that. And of course, that is part of the method to the madness here. Windsor Park School does have a site that allows for the addition of modular classrooms to the site, whereas Bel Air does not have the ability to add any more modulators.
Follow-up, Trusty May and then Trusty Bukidinovich.
Thank you. So you said it is contingent on Windsor Park receiving modulators. I'm not over, like, there's so many modular asks, and so I'm kind of more familiar with my own, I must admit. Has Windsor Park been asked for through this last submission, or would it be the next following submission?
Through the chair. No, Windsor Park was not submitted because at this point in time, it's not a regular program school, and so not one that we could have considered for this. But certainly something that would be considered this time, or actually say, October of next year.
Trusty Bukidinovich?
On page 17 of 28, I see a summary of costs for reopening Bel Air School for CBE use and reopening Windsor Park School for regular use. Would there also be a cost at El Boya School? In particular, constituents keep asking me when the bathrooms at El Boya School will be due for a major modernization, and I imagine some of them are sized for little elementary-school-aged kids and might be modified for exclusively middle-school-aged children.
Through the chair. Assessment certainly is continuing on the possibilities of what might be needed. What I have been able to confirm is that the fixtures within the bathrooms are of a standard size, and so they would not need to be changed in light of the middle school, junior high school configuration. So certainly, there would potentially be a need for some minor investments, as would be required any time, to ensure that all those fixtures are working properly and continue to function as intended. But nothing from a washroom perspective at this time.
Chief Pittman, or Superintendent Turner?
Sorry, through the chair, come back to the question that Trusty Close asked earlier. Attachment 2 does have home education listed with Windsor Park at 403 students in the school enrollment report.
Trusty Bukidinovich?
If Windsor Park School were to be reopened for regular use, I see that there could potentially be redesignations and grade reconfigurations all the way up and down Elbow Drive from Rideau Park School in the north to Woodman School in the south. I know how important independence is for the mental and socio-emotional health of children, but it's also challenging for children to cross four lanes of traffic to get from one side of Elbow Drive to the other. This is why I felt particularly rattled hearing about the death of Ralph Lindonblatt, who was killed on November 27th when he was struck by two vehicles while crossing Elbow Drive at a marked crosswalk on 61st Avenue. Is there anything CBE can do to encourage the City of Calgary to install flashing lights at every single marked crosswalk on Elbow Drive between Mission and Woodman School?
Through the chair. Before any specific responses given regarding Elbow Drive, I would say safety for all of our students remains a critical concern, and we work closely with the City of Calgary to address any specific areas going forward. I would also highlight that the primary focus of the report before the board is specific to home education and the relocation of said, and as highlighted in my opening comments, that administration also wishes to be transparent with future use and intended use of buildings to optimize a space, given the enrollment report before us, and as you highlighted, the enrollment pressures. So at a broad level, our continued processes around safety remain a top priority and is consistently and continuously adjusted through facilities and environmental services in response to safety concerns we have across our city currently, similar to any significant areas of transportation where our students are walking.
Through the chair, to add to the, to the response, and in a further recognition of the importance that the CBE places on safety for students, it is the CBE that created the Safe Student Travel Advisory Group that brings together a multitude of different parties, including the city, Calgary Police, Alberta Motor Association, the other school jurisdictions, many other entities, to review concerns and then allow for actions to be identified and taken by these different parties. And it is through then this SSTAG, the Safe Student Travel Advisory Group, that we have that ability to influence the city in terms of potential opportunities given a change to a school for, that might be required for, to facilitate active ways of traveling to school. Of note, I'd also like to point out that the City of Calgary does highlight to us that motorist compliance is enhanced when these measures that you're referencing, these rapid flashing rectangular beacons, are placed at major or main crossings rather than throughout. I would imagine there's a certain degree of complacency that occurs if they're too frequent. And no, also that the city does prioritize traffic treatments, if we want to call these enhancements, based on the amount of traffic and, and of the numbers of incidents that have occurred. And so, further to that most unfortunate incident that you referenced, I know that in early October, the city did install rapid flashing beacons at Henry Wisewood on that street, as well as painting and installing yield signs, both on the road and next to the road, to help increase awareness and visibility of that, of that pedestrian crossing.
Trustees, any additional questions? Trusty Bukidinovich?
If Windsor Park School were to be reopened for regular use, parents are concerned about before and after-school care. Would parents be able to expect that there would be before and after-school care in place if it were to be reopened as a regular school right from day one?
Through the chair. The CBE, as I mentioned also during the public session that was conducted in November, is committed to growing the number of before and after-school programs it has in its schools. And of course, the board also received a chief superintendent's update early in this school year on that very fact, despite the fact that we are seeing record enrollment in our schools. And in this case, certainly no different. And based on the experience that we've had with opening new schools with before and after-school care programs on day one, we are cautiously optimistic that we would be able to do the same for a Windsor Park School, should the board decide to proceed with this relocation. That being said, of course, it is continued to be contingent upon having a successful and interested applicant or third-party service provider. and interested applicant or third-party service provider, and the, or the securing of the permits that are required, both from the city and various permitting agencies. We are able to work and help support those entities to ensure that that can occur based on our experience.
Trustee Close.
I need, I need to clarify or start this question with, I really value the CBE home education program, especially the shared responsibility one, and I have been struggling with the process that's presented to us, because I feel like, so I'll just stop there. I'm struggling with the process that, as it's presented to us, to consider a relocation as part of a closure. And so I've got two combined questions. One, from a CBE home education perspective, have other locations been considered? Has the delivery of the CBE home education program been an ongoing or current student accommodation planning project as per the student accommodation plan? And then, the way my brain works is to think of that in another way. We have Windsor Park with huge experience, significant growth. If we didn't have Bel Air School available, what would we have done? Like, how, how do you do these competing values and priorities of, we need a neighborhood school in a, in a growing neighborhood, but we also need to, I think, think in terms of, how best do we provide the CBE home, home education program in CBE?
Through the chair. Certainly, during these years of exceptionally high enrollment, where to place programs such as this does become exceedingly difficult and challenging. This particularly, this particular program has been identified on the SSAP, this System Student Accommodation Plan, since 2020. It was identified as a system initiative, and in a portion of that certainly is a reflection of the fact that we don't attract any operation and maintenance funding from the government in light of the, the nature of the program. That being said, there appears to be an opening within Alberta Education to reconsider that, and that is something that we are exploring further with, and whether the program remains at Windsor Park going forward or is relocated to Bel Air School. Now, the, the matter that is brought to you before, before you today, it really is, is incredible coincidence and a very timely one at that, in the sense that the fact that the Calgary Girls Charter Academy moved out of that facility just a kilometer, a kilometer down the road from the Windsor Park, created all sorts of opportunities that would not have been available, to both allow home education programming to continue essentially unchanged, while also benefiting students within that area of the city.
Trustee Bukodinovich.
Would Windsor Park be able to, if, if this, if, if this were to go through, would Windsor Park be able to accommodate a temporary onsite before and after school care for kindergarten as well during the first year? That would be the 2025, 26 school year. That would be the year in which the school would have just K to three, and there would be a bit of extra space, and a transitional temporary year like this would buy extra time for the before and after school care provider, if one is, is secured, to try to figure out a long-term way to accommodate before and after school care for, for kindergarten for the 2026 to 2027 school year and beyond.
Through the chair. Because of how the proposal would see, if again approved by the Board of Trustees, in terms of relocating the home education program to Bel Air School, the, the redesignation plan that has been put forward by CBE administration does see the first year of the Windsor Park Community School opening from a K to three perspective. And so there would be space within the school to allow for a kindergarten daycare offering. That being said, whether or not the service provider that we secure would be interested in investing the resources to create that, knowing that it would only be for a single year, because as you can see within the board report, within one year already, as soon as the grade four grade is added to that school, utilization rate is already in the low 90s, and then progresses rapidly up to 100%. And so that would be certainly a question for the service provider once selected, and it would be a business case analysis for them to see whether the resources that they would have to outlay initially would make sense in the grand scheme of things.
Trustee May.
Thank you. I have a question stemming from a response a bit earlier, talking about how the home education was put on the SSAP in 2020, and was it solely because we don't get O and M? Because I'm just looking in the report, I think they've been equivalent of 179 students that would attend, so it's a 200-person school, so, I mean, it's well utilized. So are there other factors that would lead for it to be on the SSAP? I'm just curious.
Through the chair. I'll go back in my wayback machine to 2020, when it was positioned on the report, and of course, at that time, what we were seeing within our elementary schools was declining enrollment consistently from 2014 or so onwards. Every year, declining enrollment projections were very clear on that front, and to ensure that we continue to maximize and steward our limited resources, that project was placed specifically because of the fact that it was, it is drawing operation and maintenance funding from other schools that are fully funded, to be able to continue to operate that facility. And so it's within that context that it was placed there, and the knowledge that if we were able to find space within an operating elementary school, and we go back to some of the discussion previously, makes me think, I think superintendent Turner conveyed how this program was placed in Windsor Park School in 2006, and you'll recall, the program, the regular program wasn't closed until 2008. So we actually had a dual-track program for two years. And so if there had been an opportunity, and that was something that was being considered at that time, not knowing what was about to hit us after the pandemic, that if we could position that program within an operating elementary school or other school that had space, that it would continue to be attracting operation and maintenance funding and potentially provide an opportunity to reconsider what to, to do with Windsor Park.
Trustee May.
So as a follow-up, it's a technicality that the movement, because it's a reclaimed school, will allow it to receive operation and maintenance funding, even though it's the exact same code, whereas because it's in Windsor Park currently, it can't get operation and maintenance? Is that what I'm, like, am I getting that correctly? That if it moves, it now gets operation and maintenance funding? That's what I heard, but I don't know if that, doesn't seem correct to me, but...
Through the chair. I may have misspoke. What I was trying to express is that up until now, Alberta Education has not allowed that school to attract operation and maintenance funding. However, as of this school year, in our more recent discussions with Alberta Education, they've shown a, a new opening to the possibility that that could occur, and that would be, notwithstanding the, the move or lack thereof. And so whether it would stay at Windsor Park, or whether it gets relocated to Bel Air School, we are exploring that currently with Alberta Education and hoping that we can make a difference on that front.
Trustee Close.
And now I go to parking. Has there been an acknowledgement of that this could be challenging? When I look at the Bel Air site, it has one street frontage, unlike our other schools in, in neighborhoods, and, and when I walked by, the, the staff parking lot seems small to me. So I'm just worried from a, a neighborhood perspective of what, because there's lane access that people would use, there's, there's only one entrance into Bel Air from Elbow Drive, and I know that, that similar to, like, all of our schools, the CBE home education program has built a strong community of parents gathering and, and, and being there for celebrations. And so I'm just curious if this has come up, or how it will be addressed going forward.
Through the chair. It is our assessment that the community, Bel Air, should likely not see any difference, or if anything, it might actually be a favorable difference in terms of parking. And why I go to that place in my mind, and, and how our assessment arrived at that, is the fact that previously, this was a charter school, and so these students are typically bused and/or transported from across the city, and it would have been relatively well-used. And that's why it actually ended up relocating. They were looking for an alternate location to allow them to, to, to continue to grow. Whereas in this case, we have a home education program that would have, that would see less than 200 students on any given day present, because of the two-day scenario, that attendance scenario for the shared care program that would attend on any given day. Also, we see many of those students that are carpooling, because either they're siblings, it's a family, or, again, they're picking up others that have, have created connections and are transporting their students to the, to that site. And then when we speak with the school administration of the existing site, you know, typically we'll see maybe 10 to 12 parents on location at any time, at a point in time, parked on a single street also at Windsor Park School. And so at the end of the day, probably not a, a huge impact or much of a difference from what the community in Bel Air has experienced in the past.
Trustees, any final questions or comments on the report? Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Trustee May.
That the Board of Trustees is satisfied that there is cause to commence the public input process to consider the closure of CBE home education at Windsor Park School for the purpose of relocation in accordance with GC-3E2 Closure of Schools Procedure.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees is satisfied that there is cause to commence the public input process to consider the closure of CBE home education at Windsor Park School for the purpose of relocation in accordance with GC3E2 Closure of Schools Procedure. Trustee May, would you please open debate?
Thank you. The report presented contains appropriate and sufficient information to commence the public input processes as set out in GC-3E Closure of Schools Procedure. I have a high degree of confidence that this report is before the board after careful consideration of various options and brings forth the best option to support our students and communities. As trustees, we are steward of our resources, both financial and space accommodation-wise. This closure recommendation is quite unique, with many factors in play that will impact many students, schools, programs, and neighborhood communities, while attempting to address space pressures within our system and provide capacity in the middle school years. It outlines a thoughtful use of a newly returned school site location, as well as a transition plan for the home education program, considering and reflecting on the many factors that have led to its current success, with its two distinct and complementary streams and intentional spaces. In reading the dialogue found in attachment one to the report, that in an online survey from October 17th to 31st, many concerns have been voiced, and now, if moving forward to the input process, we will be provided as trustees additional considerations and new perspectives from our public.
Thank you. Are there any trustees that wish to enter first round of debate? Trustee Bukodinovich.
I think it's amazing that, one way or another, whether it's Bel Air School or Windsor Park School, the CBE will be, potentially be able to add 200 more student spaces in central Calgary by September 2025. This is great news. I hear heartbreaking stories of families who live in the catchment area for the overflowing schools in Calgary's core, and whose children didn't get through the lottery to attend their local school with their friends and neighbors. This report is bringing forward a potential solution to address this overflow, so I'm interested in hearing from the public to find out if they also agree that this could potentially provide a solution. And I'm feeling very grateful that we even have this option to consider, to potentially add a whole additional school to the core by September 2025, and I'm grateful that CBE staff members are bringing this well-thought-out and carefully analyzed proposal for trustees to consider.
Thank you. Trustee Close.
Just to add that my colleagues have, in combination, provided the rationale that I also support and would vote in, in favor of moving forward with consideration.
Trustee Hack.
I'll just provide and probably echo. So closure processes and opening these considerations, even just for purpose of relocations, are never easy. They involve change to students and to families. Change is inherently difficult as humans, truly. And given that the decision before us to side is, if there is sufficient evidence to commence public input on the matter, I feel as if the administration has provided enough information on the tipping of scales, that I'm inclined to vote in favor of the motion before us, because I'd like to hear more from the public on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just add in that I'm satisfied that there's cause to commence the public input process to consider the closure of the home education program at Windsor Park for the purpose of relocation. Really, we're looking to optimize learning spaces, balance enrollment in the southwest, add 200-plus learning spaces to our CBE inventory, and there's need for elementary spaces in the Windsor Park area, and as well, the two sites are exceptionally close, and enrollment looks to be stable within the home education program. Are there any trustees wishing to enter second round of debate? Trustee Bukodinovich.
From the comments from parents and guardians, the, the ones that were included in the report we received, I see that the home education program is a special, unique, and wonderful program. I'm proud that we offer a robust home education program through the Calgary Board of Education, and I'm proud of how closely we always work with families. While I do see comments in this report from people who are concerned about this potential change, I would like to have the opportunity to hear from people at a public meeting, input meeting, to better understand the extent to which home education parents are concerned about this potential move. So I would like to hear, hear from them, and for that reason, I'm also, another reason why I'm planning to vote in favor of this motion.
Anyone else wishing to enter second round? Trustee May, do you wish to close debate?
Thank you. I appreciate the thoughtfulness of my fellow trustees. Initiating the closure process will have trustees now consider this unique opportunity to now provide 200 new learning spaces and address enrollment pressures across our system, while still maintaining the home education mandate and programming. In reading the background material, I am pleased to hear about the students supported through the years, as well as the ongoing dedication of our staff and families. The public input process allows the Board of Trustees to give fair consideration to students, families, communities, and those significantly affected by such a decision. And this is a big decision, but enough evidence has been provided that we can begin the process. I know personally, any public input process we engage in is one of the most important opportunities we have to listen and truly hear. I always look forward to public input to help in further deliberations, as well as give the opportunity to engage in public decisions and have public be part of decisions that affect them. As with any other commencement of public input process, it is important to emphasize we have policies and procedures in place, and that no decision has been made at this time by the Board of Trustees. We will now begin engagement with our public to hear a variety of perspectives, and I would encourage fellow trustees to vote in favor of the motion.
Thank you, trustee May. I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Are there any further motions to this report? Trustee May.
That the Board of Trustees approves the public input period to consider the closure of the CBE home education for the purpose of relocation be shortened from 60 calendar days to 57 calendar days in accordance with GC-3E2 Closure of Schools Procedure.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the public input period to consider the closure of CBE Home Education for the purpose of relocation to be shortened from 60 calendar days to 57 calendar days in accordance with G C three E two, closure of schools procedure. Trustee May, would you please open debate?
Trustees, this motion is required to shorten our own policy that requires 60 calendar days for public input process. It is to shorten the process by only three calendar days, but still gives ample opportunity to hear from the public through various processes. It also aligns with the regularly scheduled public board meeting on February 11th, 2025, to make such a decision and to give families as much notice as possible.
Thank you. Are there any trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Trustee Hack?
Plan to vote in favor. Three days for me is insignificant as a timeline to gather information or have public input. But knowing that the sooner that we make a decision, it can alleviate stress and confirm certainty as to what next year brings for these students. Should we decide to leave them at the current school or relocate them, the sooner we can provide a decision, I feel the more time administration can act the board's decision on the matter. Thank you.
Any other trustees for first round? Trustee Bukedinovich?
I just know how important before and after-school care is for families and for before-and-after-school care providers who are trying to run their business. They also need as much runway as possible in order to set up permits and get things done. So this also allows, helps with planning for whatever comes next.
Anyone wishing to enter second round of debate? Trustee May, do you wish to close debate?
Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Right now, we'll just take a quick five-minute recess. Thank you. We'll now reconvene the meeting. Next on our agenda is item 8.2, consideration of closure of the All Boys Program. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Chair Boulder and trustees, you will recall how on September 24th, 2024, the Board of Trustees passed a motion to commence the public input process for the purpose of considering the closure of the All Boys Program, a kindergarten-to-grade-six-alternative program offering single-gendered programming for boys. Today's report speaks to our compliance with legislation and board policy since that time period. And to elaborate further, I'll hand over introduction of this report to Superintendent Breton.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Pittman. Board of Trustees, the Education Act and your own policy in regards to closure of school procedures sets out the formal process that must be followed when a closure of a program is being considered. Under the direction provided by you in September of this school year, these last several months, the CBE has provided written notice of the recommendation of closure, has posted notices of the public input meeting, has held a public input meeting on October 22nd, and provided verbal and written opportunities for public comment. Accordingly, today, we can confirm that as a result of this work, we have complied with the requirements of the Education Act and of your board policy pertaining to school closures. With this work now complete and with the information now available to the Board of Trustees regarding the recommendation, we are available to answer any additional questions you may have to support the important decision that is before you. Thank you.
Trustees, questions or comments on the report? Trustee Hack?
Thank you. Page, I can't find here. Page two, three under financial impact. It's listed $165,000 for ongoing maintenance. I'm just wondering how this is considered an impact, given the costs? And I'm making assumption here that they would still apply if CBE students remained in the building.
Through the chair. You're quite accurate on that. The reason it's identified there goes back to two reasons. First, the board's closure of schools procedure under Section 15 identifies that financial considerations need to be identified for the board to contemplate. Secondly, it's the board report template, and it's identified as financial impact. Now, you will note, though, that the sentence does go on to say that these costs would continue because the intent for the CBE is to, again, because of the incredible growth, continue to operate that school. Maybe what would have provided a little bit more impact under the financial impact is if we would have looked at the fact that it's approximately $165,000 a year for operations and maintenance. There are 33 students. That comes out to about $5,000 per student in operating costs, whereas our average operating cost for an elementary school comes in at around $850. And so certainly, if you have a full school, that figure of $5,000 per student would reduce dramatically.
Follow-up, Trustee Hack?
So you referenced O N M, I believe, on the average at 850 per student, which I saw in the first report. Can you just separate out the deferred maintenance costs from operation maintenance being deferred maintenance, still in a building, the O N M? Can you break that out from the 1.5, please?
Through the chair. So the deferred maintenance amount for that school is identified as $3.6 million.
Trustee Bukedinovich?
In this report, I see information about the, again, talking about the financial impact of closing this school. And when we attended the public meeting on Tuesday, October 22nd, one of the recurring comments I heard was a concern that CBE was making this decision because of the money. And I'm trying to understand this aspect a bit better. When a private corporation cuts costs, typically it's done to increase profits for shareholders. But the Calgary Board of Education is not a private corporation where savings can be turned into profits for shareholders. So what happens when the CBE cuts costs somewhere? Where does the money go? And what does it mean for students across our system when we work with what we get and allocate our limited funding as efficiently as possible?
So through the chair, as I think all trustees are well aware, the CBE is committed to directing the maximum amount of funding possible to the teaching and learning in the classroom. As a result, when efficiencies or savings are found across the system, those dollars are directed to teaching and learning in the classroom. There are a few exceptions, of course. Operations and maintenance funding must be spent on operations and maintenance. Transportation funding must, a school is attracting more than the average than it's up to the remainder of the system to fill in the gap. So if we take it outside of this conversation and just say we found an extra million dollars somewhere, approximately 77% of that would go directly to teaching and learning in the classroom. So with regard to this conversation specifically, any savings or efficiencies would largely go to teaching and learning in the classroom. Second-largest category of expenditure, of course, would be the operations and maintenance of the facility. Thanks.
Trustee Bukedinovich?
This is an all-boys school, but when I listened to the comments at the public input meeting, people spoke more about the need for a CBE school dedicated for kids with complex needs related to learning disabilities, social, emotional, regulation, and behavior, rather than about the need for a CBE school dedicated to single-gendered education. If it is not a single-gendered all-boys program that parents want, would it be possible to keep a program or a class at this location that is dedicated to both boys and girls who are living and learning with neurodiverse learning needs? Instead of closing the all-boys program, could the CBE instead change the program's mandate and turn this into a neurodivergent learner's school for boys and girls? Or alternatively, would the CBE consider opening specialized classes at various other CBE locations for elementary-school-aged children with neurodivergent learning needs?
Through the chair. Before I hand it over to Superintendent Turner, I just want to highlight the high-level value linked to community schools versus alternative programs or other specialized classes, which in fact do come with other costs associated. And so further to Superintendent Grundy's comments around effective use of dollars and maximizing those dollars, given the realities that we know exist in funding. Administration's commitment is to ensuring that we're making maximum available space to community programs in alignment with the board's values of regular programming. And should, as choice continues to be a discussion point, those are always opportunities. But our current realities, given the enrollment report, given the previous decision, given our discussions even on the construction project status updates, it's important, just at a high level, to recognize that administration is prioritizing making the most spaces available to maximize available funding. And I'll pass it over to Superintendent Turner, who will talk a little bit further to your question around providing services to students who are neurodiverse.
Thank you. Through the chair. And so as Superintendent Pittman shared, our first and preferred placement option is an inclusive setting in a neighborhood or local school. As part of our continuum of supports and services and to meet the most diverse needs of our learners, the CBE has close to currently 300 specialized classes that support students with a range of profiles. These profiles include students with complex needs, social, emotional, behavioral concerns, learning disabilities, giftedness, language desires as well. And so a significant number of these students in these programs would be considered neurodiverse. We have also, in addition to school-based and neighborhood-community-based, universal-targeted and individualized supports along a continuum of supports, we have a number of unique settings that support children with a range of profiles. And this includes Woods, Hull Children's Village for social, emotional, and behavior supports, Emily Follensby, Christine Miko for medically fragile and complex needs, and for Dr. Oakley for students who have a learning disability. This does not include students who attend any one of our other programs with Alberta Health Services or our unique populations that are met through the programs of Westview, Louise Dean, Alternative High, Discovering Choices, or other specific programs within our schools. That being said, a significant majority of our students' needs are continued to be met within their community-based school with a range of a continuum of supports and services to meet diverse learning needs. Thank you.
Trustee May?
A question kind of as a follow-up for that. I'm wondering, do most of the schools that, most of the students that are in all-boys right now, do they start in a community school and move over to all-boys? Or did they start in all-boys?
Through the chair. It is a mix. And so if we look at this school year, we had five transfers from other CBE schools and 10 new registrations come in across all grades. And then the year prior to that, it was seven students that had been transferred from other CBE schools and 10 from external sources again. So not quite half and half, but close.
I could add further to Superintendent Breton that in examining student registration history at all-boys, they're not a single story or a homogeneous grouping, that each individual has their own history and educational journey that has them arrive there. And so out of our current population, 15% of the total population currently enrolled at all-boys have completed all of their educational experiences within a Calgary Board of Education school, with a majority of those students coming from a variety of other systems and programs and jurisdictions from across our province and city.
Trustee Bukedinovich?
Yes, I wanted to follow up just on what I heard earlier from Chief Superintendent Pittman about the choice piece. I think one of the challenges here is, to my understanding, is that the all-boys program is one of the CBE's programs, like a Language, Traditional Learning Center, Montessori, where it's a choice, so parents can make a choice to register their kids for it, versus our specialized classes and unique-setting schools are not so much something that are listed on our menu of program choice, rather they're there to serve and need. So I think that's one of, I guess, maybe more of a comment, that it's one of the challenges that, even though I heard you say earlier that the board recognizes the value of community schools, and we do indeed, I agree that that is what you're hearing from the board, and it's what we're hearing from parents when we look at what parents are choosing. The overwhelming majority, over 90%, choose their, or is it, sorry, 80%, I think, choose their community school as their first choice. So it is clearly, community schools are what parents value. But when we talk about serving the needs of kids with neurodivergent needs, they're not necessarily, parents aren't necessarily looking for choice versus community. What they're looking is having a need met.
Through the chair. I certainly appreciate how you've framed out choice versus placement, and you're correct in that. And the reason why we engage in placement of students on the continuum of supports and services is because of that additional commitment that is then made in additional supports, very much directed to a special education code. And it is because that code and the needs and programmatic needs reach a threshold that require that type of direct placement. And the role of administration in that is to ensure that we are providing those supports in as equitable a fashion as possible, knowing that for some students with the same level of programmatic need, one may need a specialized class placement, and another may be fully integrated into an inclusive community setting. And there are a range of factors of how that can come to be true. And so as an organization, we look to facilitate that with families. When we look at the students within all-boys, the students within the all-boys program at this time, broadly speaking, not speaking to any one individual, would typically not meet that threshold for those placement opportunities in specialized classes. I do believe the board is well-aware that we spend 41-plus million dollars over and above our Specialized Learning Support Services grant to support specialized services to students. And in that context, we're again looking to maximize. And those are really challenging decisions. And what we look to do, and as Superintendent Turner has talked about, is provide that inclusive environment with the greatest level of supports. And I think trustees have seen evidence of that as you've walked through CBE schools and some of those changes that have been made, specifically in the last five years. The pandemic certainly allowed for a greater discussion, required, in fact, a greater discussion about individualized learning needs and flexibility. And it's something that's really, it's an important value within each and every one of our classrooms and an ongoing need, agreed, that we need to continue to provide services that look different. But the provision of a specific program that may be a choice could inadvertently create a very significant cost driver where from an alternative program mandate is a different conversation and one that is separate from specialized programming.
Any other questions or comments on the report? Trustee Hack and then Trustee Bukedinovich? Do you want to go ahead, Trustee Bukedinovich?
Well, I just wanted to follow further this thread. So if I heard correctly, it's potential that the number of the boys at the all-boys program wouldn't necessarily meet the threshold for attending specialized, either specialized classes or our unique-setting schools. And I appreciate, you know, hearing the reminder that it is over $41 million that the CBE spends on providing inclusive education to students. Can you remind me, what is the delta between how much the CBE spends on inclusive education versus how much we are funded for it and how we make up the difference?
41 million is the delta.
Oh, that is the delta. Sorry. Yes, sorry. Wow. That is a significant, I mean, this just plays into, if I may comment, when I see that Alberta, across the province, we would need an additional $1 billion. when I see that, that Alberta, across the province, we would need an additional $1 billion across the province in order to bring us up just to the average level of per-student funding at current enrollment levels. And that would translate to, I think, approximately 180 million for CBE at current enrollment levels. So when I look at, we're missing 180 million dollars from our budget at current enrollment levels, that, that's the difference. That's where we'd be able to offer additional specialized classes and additional unique setting schools. Wow.
Trustee Hack?
Thank you. And yes, $1 billion is what needed. That's a good number. Um, I'm going to switch gears here a little bit to busing and transportation. So I've got two parts, I'll ask the first part and then the second part. So, um, how many students currently attending the All Boys program? Because I see in, in the report, it says that they require two buses. How many would still require busing under the government's proposed changes to the walk zones if they were to go to their designated schools?
Through the chair. So there's currently two buses, and there are currently seven students that are registered and that utilize those seven buses. Going forward, of those seven students, five of them would continue to, continue to need to be bussed or bust, or would be eligible for, for busing, I should say. Whereas the other two would be within the walk zone of their community school. There are also, though, another 17 students that would become eligible for busing under the, the standards that we've heard recently, and that could then apply and register for busing to their designated regular program school. Now, these schools already have buses, and so certainly that's where the delta occurs on that front, because typically we'd be able to simply add those small numbers of students to their respective community school bus route, as opposed to having to create a separate route specifically for them.
Trustee Hack?
Just trying to weigh my options here. If the board does proceed with a closure and the school is opened as a community school, I know we're not going to know exact numbers on how many move in, move out, that's fine. But I'm wondering, could you give me approximation on how many students who would attend the Peter Lahit School, wouldn't, that would need busing under the government's new walk zone changes? And give me an average number of buses that would be needed for that. Thank you.
Through the chair. I might disappoint on this answer. So certainly, given the record-breaking enrollment growth, we are committed to reopening this school and ensuring that we're able to continue to relieve, release the pressure that's existent. But any such review is incredibly complicated. And I just think back to the Home Education Plan that consumed an inordinate amount of time from the redesignation aspect of it. And so in this case, given the late date of the decision, and at this point in time, the need to continue analyzing potential scenarios and wanting to respect families and the need for time that they need to plan their lives based on what would occur and the fact that we have not been communicating anything this fall to those families, there's a high likelihood that what you'd actually see is the school remaining vacant for a year while the plan is finalized and communicated in the fall of 2025 for implementation the following school year.
Trustee Bukedinovich?
Uh, just trying to better understand what the specialized classes and inclusive settings, sorry, unique settings that we offer to students in the CB system. And of course, I am aware that our enrollment report that was provided today does actually have, happen to have a handy list, right, I think on the last page or two, as a good refresher on, on the specialized classrooms and unique setting schools that we offer. But if a child's parents or guardians are, were, are called to pick him or her up from school, is there a very strong chance that that child, like a child who's called, like parents are being called because, because of, of, of dysregulated behavior, would, did that child qualify for a spot in a specialized classroom or in a unique setting school? Or do we have kids whose parents are being called on a semi-regular basis to pick them up from their regular schools, but who nevertheless still do not meet the threshold for one of those precious few limited spots in our specialized classes or unique setting schools?
Thank you. Through the chair. And so we do have students who at times were sent home due to dysregulation. And while this behavior indicates significant challenges, it does not automatically mean that that student would meet the criteria for placement in a specialized classroom or a unique setting school. Students may become dysregulated for a variety of different reasons, and this includes medical, emotional, sensory, or environmental factors that cause this dysregulation for the student. And so staff require a careful understanding of the impetus for this dysregulation and matching supports, interventions, programming to this unique need for each individual student. It requires essential and close collaboration with their family and an examination of the environment. The gap highlights a need for a robust continuum of supports and services that include both universal and classroom-based targeted and individualized supports in their school community, in order to make sure that we meet the best needs of students who become dysregulated during the day.
Trustee Bukedinovich?
From the comments at the public input meeting, I, I heard quite loudly and clearly that, that there are parents in Calgary who, there are many parents, obviously, we know where the inclusive model works for them, because I know, because, because I'm a parent as well, and, and my kids talk about, you know, kids in their classrooms who are dysregulated, they know who they are, they, they do invite them to birthday parties, they do, like, they, they come to my home. So I've, I've seen the, the benefit of inclusive classrooms. I have in my own life and my children's lives, and they're just very matter-of-fact, like this is just the way it is, and they don't judge the kids, they realize that, you know, that it's called, the kids are just, they seem more, it's more different from when we were going to, to school, they seem to be more aware that neurodiversity is just a thing, and we move on and we, we live with it. And yet, through the public input meetings, I did hear that we also have parents who, who feel like the inclusive model where it's just not a great fit for their kids. So my question is, if a specialized class specifically dedicated, dedicated to elementary school-aged boys and girls with neurodiverse learning needs doesn't currently exist, would the CBE consider opening one or more in our schools? Would any of the savings from the All Boys program allow us to, to, to open one? Or if, if, if we, if we can successfully convince the provincial government as a Board of Trustees to increase funding across Alberta by $1 billion at current enrollment levels, what would it, would it, would, would that be within the realm of possibilities? Or is this, or is this, or is it, is it a funding issue? To what extent is it a funding issue? And to what extent is it a philosophical issue regarding the best placement for students who are elementary school age with neurodiverse learning needs? And again, going back to I heard earlier that our first and preferred placement setting is in an inclusive setting?
I'll begin. And so thank you through the chair. I think, taking a couple of steps backwards, the term neurodiverse is really broad-ranging. And so it's a, a term that describes variation in neurological development and functioning that occurs naturally and typically across environments. And so certainly over the last five years and, and perhaps even slightly longer, there has been a significant shift moving from a pathology or something that exists that is uniform within an individual to understanding that there is variation and diverse learning needs for all individuals. And so best being able to meet that in an environment that addresses finite resources, making sure that there is a match between intervention, support, and student need, and that that happens across an environment, in a least restrictive environment, so providing the most opportunity for independence, for growth, for an ability to be a part of their school community. And so really wanting to make sure that, in your question, is it a finance or a philosophical question? It, it's both. But we, what we need to be doing in terms of our organization is ensuring that we have a careful match between the assessed need of our student population and all of the diverse learning needs, and prudently ensuring that we are responding with appropriate resources, with just right of fit, and being able to ensure that there's an equitable access to these services across our student, student body and across our organization.
Through the chair, I really appreciate Superintendent Turner's response of it's both. And I would highlight that one of the challenges and the tensions of values for all is being confident that when faced with limited and constrained resources, that we are asking, we are, we are making really challenging choices and recommendations in that, that perspective. And that doesn't in any way, that is not intended to detract from the need, but it's being confident that in the way that we are serving the need in the context of our available resources, it's having the greatest impact. And that continues to be what administration looks to assess around how we move resources and respond at a time of surging enrollment, 11,000, a record-high 11,000 newcomer students registering for 24, 25, and seeking to understand all of those components. And, and so I don't in any way wish to detract from the challenge and the desire of families to have optimal support for their children. That is ours as well. And we look to do so in a way that recognizes the constraints within which we work. Trustee Bukedinovich?
Yeah, I appreciate that, that is it financing or philosophy? It's the finances or the philosophy? It's both. On another note, also along the, that gray area where it's might be neither nor or both, some of the comments I heard at the public input meeting, people were talking about how the All Boys program provides accommodations that would be useful in all CBE classrooms to make all CBE classrooms more inclusive. So for example, people talked about the value of dimmed lights, tennis balls on the chair feet to minimize noise, separate rooms for calming down, exercise equipment for movement. And here's the disconnect. When I have visited CBE schools, and in my role, I've had the, the honor and the pleasure of visiting many CBE schools as a trustee, I have seen these exact universal supports in place in every single CBE school I have visited. We do actually do that. So there's a disconnect here. So I, I want to talk about the disconnect. I'm hearing people say that they choose the All Boys program because the CBE doesn't offer these small differences in, in regular schools. And yet I do see these small differences in, in regular, I do see a universal, that's why they're called universal, universal, um, inclusive accommodations. So where is the disconnect coming from? Is it due to a lack of communication between schools and parents, lack of trust? Is it seeking information from Facebook before talking with teachers and principals? Is, or is it due to, like, people actually haven't seen? Was there a disconnect during the pandemic where people weren't going to the school so they didn't know what the schools were, had? I just, I, I'm surprised to see that there's this disconnect between perception and reality when it comes to the universal supports offered in CBE schools.
Thank you, and thank you for noting. A possible explanation for the disconnect may be that universal supports that you have observed in your school, school tours, the universal supports that are available through our inclusive education team and expressed concern may be explained by understanding some of the school history of our student current population that attends All Boys, and that a very small fraction of the student population enrolled at All Boys have previously started their career in a CBE school. We can't speculate or understand the history or the background that families have experienced in other school programs before they've arrived at All Boys. What we can be certain of is that they have highlighted these universal supports as being something that's very important for the success of their student, and then that we know that these supports are available across CBE schools. And so confident that these supports would be available to them if they were to return to their community school, if this board made, made the decision. Thank you.
Trustees, any other questions or comments on the report? Hearing none, the board will now consider the approval of the minutes for the October 22nd, 2024 Public Input Meeting. I would request a trustee bring forward a motion regarding the approval of these minutes. Trustee Hack?
Move that the Board of Trustees approves the minutes of the Public Input Meeting for the All Boys held on October 22nd, 2024, provide an attachment one to this report.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the minutes of the Public Input Meeting for All Boys held on October 22nd, 2024, provided in attachment one to this report. I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Trustee Bukedinovich, would you please provide the board with a synopsis of the public written submission received by the Board of Trustees in relation to the consideration of closure of the All Boys program?
Yes. The CBE values the input of parents, community members, and other stakeholders when a school closure is contemplated. And for this reason, Calgarians were provided with multiple avenues for providing feedback, which are explained in detail in the publicly available report that is included as part of the agenda package for today's public meeting. One of the ways in which the CBE welcomed feedback was through written submissions from the public. Written submissions were received from September 25th, 2025, up to and including December 10th, sorry, 2024, not 2025, up to and including December 10th, 2024. For reasons of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, the full text of the material was circulated to trustees only, which is why we ask for a trustee to provide a summary of the written submissions. And so this is why I'm speaking before you right now, is a trust, as the trustee elected in Ward Eight and Ward Nine, I've been tasked with providing an overview of the written submissions from the public. Approximately 20 individuals avail themselves of the opportunity to send written submissions to the Area Seven Office and the Board of Trustees' Office. Of the 20 individuals who sent written submissions, nine are current parents, seven are external community members, including two from the local community association, one is a person who is hoping to become a future parent if the All Boys program is not closed, and three are parents of children who attended the All Boys program in the past and have graduated. There were several themes that I found in the written submissions. First, a number of letters, letter writers shared their thoughts about the mandate of the school. A number of people who wrote letters talked about how the All Boys program has organically transformed into a community hub for neurodivergent boys and their families. The second theme that emerged is related to whether the neurodivergent boys who currently attend this school would be able to thrive in a regular school environment. A third theme that emerged is related to the need for either additional specialized classes or unique setting schools at the CBE to accommodate children with neurodivergent learning needs. The fourth theme to emerge is that some people feel that the low enrollment is due to a lack of adequate marketing by the CBE. A fifth theme to emerge was people writing about the value and benefits of single-gendered gendered education for boys. A sixth theme that emerged relates to the financial reasons for the recommendation to close the All Boys program. And finally, the seventh theme in the written submissions relates to the need for a regular community school to serve the growing school-aged population in the area. In conclusion, of the 20 individuals who sent written submissions, the common thread woven through most of the feedback is that parents in Calgary are looking for a dedicated public school or dedicated public school classrooms for elementary school-aged children with neurodivergent learning needs.
Thank you, trustee Bukedinovich. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Trustee Hack?
That the Board of Trustees approves the closure of the All Boys program. That the Board of Trustees approves the closure of the All Boys program effective June 30th, 2025.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the closure of the All Boys program effective June 30th, 2025. Trustee Hack, would you please open debate?
On September 24th, 2024, administration provided rationale as to why the board should go ahead and commence the public input process to consider the closure of the All Boys program. At that September meeting, it was determined that the board was provided with sufficient evidence to indeed start the closure process as outlined in G C 3 E 2, the board's formal closure of schools procedure. The board then held a public meeting on October 22nd to hear from those affected by the decision, including parents, community members, community association members, along with the board's process of accepting letters from CalGarians on this decision. The board has been provided these letters, and all trustees either attended or listened to the audio recording of the October 22nd input session. We value the public's thoughts on this matter and are now to weigh these thoughts with our obligation to the system as a whole. What we have before us is administration's recommendation on the consideration of closing the All Boys program in accordance with the Education Act. It is trustee's job to give fair consideration to what we heard from the public input through written letters, as well as the number of students who could be affected by the decision at the school proposed for closure. It is important to consider future growth or decline in student enrollment, as in this case, the use of the availability of space at receiving schools, the need for busing, any financial considerations, consideration of possible alternative educational community uses for the school building, and the impact on CBE's long-term capital plans. Look forward to hearing from my fellow trustees on their opinions on the matter before us today.
Thank you. Are there any trustees who wish to enter first round or debate? Trustee May?
This is a remarkably difficult closure in front of us for decision today. In listening to the public input and overview of comments by Trustee Bukedinovich, I've heard similar themes throughout, that these students in this program are flourishing, successful, and have benefited from staff who know our students best and support them in any way possible. This speaks to the dedication of the staff of this school, across our system, and the intentional work and focus across our district in putting students first. I look forward to hearing more from fellow trustees.
Trustee Close?
I'll see if I can do this in three. Just to provide context, the values that guide my decision-making, our students come first. Learning is our essential purpose, and public education serves the common good. Choice is also a value I hold when it comes to programs because I recognize that learning is influenced by choice and circumstances. But I hold this value within the value of collective community good. Equity, of course, is a value that needs to be weighed because it isn't just about equal cost per student, it's about fairness. And parameters that keep any competing values in check, and there are always competing values, include fiscal responsibility. Do we have enough funding? Are we ensuring achievement, equity, and well-being for all students and staff? So I try to make a system view grounded in local contexts, and it isn't easy because both contexts matter. So what I know and what I've heard is our current system-wide enrollment of 140,000 students and our system utilization rate of 95% is extraordinary, unprecedented, and that Sir James Lahey School Building could be used as an elementary program to reduce enrollment pressures at other CBE schools. Technically, the rationale for this closure consideration that has come to us from admin is valid and sound because the All Boys program was originally set up as an alternative program, not a special education program, but a program of choice, a program that at the time that was grounded in gender viewpoint of learning. And this program has definitely become a sanctuary for neurodiverse students and their families with a higher percentage of special education students than we typically see in our alternative programs, and the current enrollment numbers are not sustainable from a programming perspective or a cost perspective. I know that parents value the classroom conditions, the need for movement breaks, reduced lighting, reduced sound. I also know that these are all science-based conditions for successful learning that we witness when we visit schools and our wards. What isn't seen, unfortunately, is the small class size of 15 to 17 students. The overall cost per student of 60% more than the average CBE cost is something also that's been reflected. This is far too high a percentage and a fact that we cannot ignore or afford. It doesn't mean that CBE only focuses on the average cost because we don't. We do make decisions to spend more on a per-student basis when it comes to serving student learning, and we heard that earlier, because in fact, within our continuum of programs that serve children with special learning needs, we use more money than received, which means we spend around $41 million from our overall per-student funding from other classrooms, other schools in Calgary. And I'll continue my debate in second round.
Any other trustees for first round? Trustee Bukedinovich?
Through this process, administration provided an overview of student supports in regular programs, regular program schools, highlighting for us that the first placement that the CBE considers for educating students with diverse learning needs is an inclusive setting as per the Education Act. I'm of two minds of this after listening to what the parents had to say. On the one hand, I have seen over and over again that we have very bright, caring people working at the CBE, and I truly appreciate the expertise and professionalism they bring to the table. They have university-level training in pedagogy and interventions. They care about kids. They have tons of experience nurturing the best in every learner. And so when our teachers and certificated staff members say that an inclusive setting in a regular classroom is what they recommend, I have a high level of trust in that. Again, as I mentioned earlier, it's a different world from when we went to school. Kids these days are used to having other kids with regulation challenges and sensory needs in their regular classrooms, and not just in the regular classrooms, but on their sports teams, and in dance, and scout and girl guide troops, and they just acknowledge that, and they hang out with them as friends, and invite them over to play, and figure out how to do group assignments at school together. Kids these days are just more chill about a peer with dysregulated behavior or a learning disability. On the other hand, parents know their kids in a way that no one else can, and they also have their children's best interests at heart. And I heard that from Chief Superintendent Pittman earlier, when she talked about how families, what they want are optimal supports for their children. And we can all understand that. And recently, I heard from a parent with a child with neurodiverse learning needs who is currently in a regular classroom, so an inclusive setting, who said to me, "In his current setup, our son spends eight hours a day at school with minimal effectiveness. Without more targeted support, I am deeply concerned about his ability to thrive and succeed. As a family, we are acutely aware of the importance of early intervention, and we feel that more resources and attention are critical for children like our son." I mean, wow, that's really, that's really powerful. And when I hear that, I have a high level of trust in that. So as I mull how I will vote, I hope that if we do end up voting to close this single-gendered school, I hope that the CBE can take very seriously the responsibility to evaluate the best next placement for each affected child.
Thank you. I'll enter first round now. What was clearly evident throughout the public engagement process to consider the closure of All Boys program is that families and students find tremendous value in this program. They love their school, they love their peers, and they love their teachers. There's little doubt that families find the education that their children are receiving is excellent. We heard suggestions of changes that could help keep the school viable, suggestions how to increase enrollment. Although much of the feedback perceived supported the school staying open as is, other stakeholders were optimistic that the site would return to being a community school where an additional 200 student spaces would be created, and students in the neighborhood or surrounding neighborhoods would be able to attend school closer to home. As governors of the board, it is our responsibility to consider the totality of the system. Three main factors stood out to me when considering this. First and foremost, alternative program mandate is not being met. We must operate in alignment with Alberta education expectations, those outlined in the Alternative Programs Handbook, which specifically states an alternative program is not a special education program. The focus of the All Boys program has shifted from its intended outcome of a program that develops the academic, social, physical, and emotional needs of boys to that of a special education program, with 61% of students having special education coding compared to the system average of 19.4%. The school is not in compliance with its alternative program mandate. Second, space. Space concerns are a significant reality for the CBE and a factor that trustees must consider. Student learning spaces are in high demand across the entirety of the system. Reasonableness is also consideration. It does not seem reasonable to have 33 students in one school building, particularly when learning spaces are in significant demand and the system is operating at a 95% utilization rate across 251 schools. Funding concerns are a reality and a factor that the Board of Trustees must consider. It does not seem reasonable for the per-student funding to be 60% higher at All Boys program than it is for other students across the system. This would seem to be inequitable and is noted in the report financially unsustainable. I'm satisfied that all closure of school procedures have been followed, and I'm confident that our administration and collaboration with the families will invest the time needed to create thoughtful and extensive transition plans for each and every student at All Boys school. For these reasons, I am in favor of the closure of All Boys program. Are there any trustees wishing to enter second round of debate? Trustee Close?
Thank you, Chair Hack. So to continue, what is clear to me that if viewed as a specialized education program, parents do believe that it is successfully meeting the learning needs of their neurotypical children. But that isn't the decision before us today. And although I have questions about whether CBE should be exploring a specialized congregated education program for neurodiverse students of all genders, and I will continue to explore whether it is feasible to establish a separate program, the decision I need to make today is whether the current program at Sir James Lahey School is sustainable, and my answer is no. And so I support the closure of this program, a program that has without question become valuable to the families and students who have participated in it. And although I know this will be perceived as an empty statement for families who will be devastated by this decision, I know that we have all learned a lot about the personal important impact of the professional expertise and dedication of the staff and families of the All Boys program has had on the lives of all the students, school students and their families. It is very much recognized that you have built a strong community of support. I also need to say that I know that CBE staff, both from an administrative and school-based view, care about students. We all do. And we know that student success is a partnership with parents, and the relationship with families is critical. I also know that our priority is social, emotional well-being for both students and staff. We will continue to prioritize the value of belonging for all students as an essential part of success. For any student that needs to transition, whether it's moving on to grade seven or within K to six to a new school location, I know that the transition will be thoughtfully and carefully made together. This is a difficult decision for all of us, and it's a decision that we need to make. We need to approve the closure of the All Boys Alternative Program at Sir James Lahey School.
Trustee May?
I appreciate how thoughtful and succinct my fellow trustees have been in debate and sharing how their values guide their decision-making process. I also appreciate and reflect in the same way trustee Close's comments on exploring and gaining further information regarding an all-gendered specialized setting school for neurodivergent learners. There is no question that the 33 students enrolled in this program are so well-served in this environment and have their needs met within this educational setting. Listening to the variety of perspectives put forth from the public and the responses today from administration regarding transition planning and student supports equitably placed across our system, it was beyond helpful, and I do not see any issues that are insurmountable at this time. We unfortunately are experiencing a lack of resources and space for our students across the CBE. We have had to stretch our dollars while addressing ever-increasing classroom complexity and classroom sizes. We have thousands of students who are overflowed from their designated school, numerous communities that still do not even have a community school, and many students who require transportation to schools far beyond their home community. Removing this alternative code from the school building will now allow for many students to now attend a regular program, school closer to home, which is a value. It is not an easy decision to make, but I will be voting in favor of the motion.
Any other trustees wishing to enter second round? Trustee Bukedinovich?
I just did want to weigh in to say that I'm not convinced when I read that this program, school is not in compliance with its alternative program mandate. It is an all-boys program, and it has all-boys attending, so I feel it is in compliance with its mandate. But I do find the other reasons that CBE administration has provided for the closure of this program, I do find the other reasons compelling. And while I personally would like the CBE to review the possibility of opening specialized classes for elementary school-aged children with neurodiverse learning needs and who present with behaviors and have learning challenges due to attention deficit, attention deficit disorder, or presenting on the autism spectrum, as trustee Close stated earlier, that is not the decision before us today. And the decision before us as trustees is a black and white one, and that is a challenge in a matter that clearly has many shades of gray. But again, it's not up to us to make a decision about the shades of gray. We're just here for the black and white. So I do read in this report that if we were to vote to close this single-gendered school, and that is kind of where I'm leaning at this point, then CBE staff members would work with families to determine the best placement for each child. And of course, I don't have the expertise or the information to know what number, where those placements would best be. So I, and I have great trust in the staff members we have. So it's a difficult decision, but I think I know how I will vote.
Thank you. Trustee Hack, do you wish to close debate?
Thank you. Just want to first off state that I think trustees are on the table here today for sharing your thoughts and your values and your views, because that does lead to meaningful discussion and debate. Those give our public a system view, so thank you for that. This is a closure program that no longer is sustainable or meets objectives as per what administration has presented to us. On the surface level, it makes sense. We deal with people, and students are affected. We appreciate it taking the time to listen to impact stories of how this program has helped mail students across our system. We heard from administration a plan to ensure that each and every student will have a transitional plan going into next year, which is reassuring. I know that the staff that is going to take these boys into their classrooms will do everything they can to be welcoming and meet their needs as best they can with limited resources. I have confidence that in closing this program, we will be better able to meet the needs of many more students within our system, as the plan is to retain the physical building to be used as a community school. This isn't an easy decision by any means. We are a massively growing system, and any underutilized spaces or programs that aren't fulfilling their mandates should be looked at as options to better meet the needs of communities. A vast majority of parents want their kids going to their local community schools with other kids from their neighborhoods. Appreciate the sharing multiple times by multiple trustees. The more we can provide that by doing any and everything we can, along with ensuring pressure is being put on provincial government to build new schools in growing areas while modernizing our over 50%, 6%, 56% aging infrastructure is a win. I urge my fellow members to vote in favor of this motion as a logical conclusion for our system, but also as a massive showing to the provincial government as just another way we as a board have always and will continue to be good stewards of public dollars. But in reality, we don't have another choice given our limiting funds and space to serve our students.
Thank you, trustee Hack. I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. We will now take a 10-minute recess and then reconvene. Our next item of business is the CBE Ward System Bylaw. This report is before the Board in accordance with Section seventy-six, one of the Education Act and the Board of Trustees' Ward Boundary Review Policy, which provide the requirements and processes for the Board to adopt a bylaw to provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and determine the boundaries of the wards. The CBE Ward System Bylaw is required in connection with the 2025 municipal election. Trustees, any questions or comments on the report? Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion to proceed to first reading of Bylaw Two of 2024?
Yes, Chair Hack. No, that's wrong. Yes, Chair Bulger. Obviously, I've said that a lot.
That the Board of Trustees authorize Bylaw Number Two of 2024, being a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education, to provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and to determine the boundaries of the wards, Bylaw Two of 2024 be given first reading.
Point of procedure.
Do trustees have questions about the motion?
Not about the motion, but point of procedure. I thought I had heard Corporate Secretary Minor say, I'm realizing this now, that the criminal, police information checks by law would be eight point one on the agenda.
Through the chair, I stated it to be eight point four. So after we completed the three already existing items on the agenda, that check would be added after that.
The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees authorize Bylaw Number Two of 2024, being a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education, to provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and to determine the boundaries of the wards, Bylaw Two of 2024, to be given first reading. Trustee Close, would you please open debate?
I think, given the technical aspect of this Ward System Bylaw, and that we need to pass a bylaw by the end of December to provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards, and provide that copy to the Minister prior to December thirty-first and the year prior to an election year, that it's rather straightforward that we would support authorizing the bylaw to be entertained today.
Thank you. Are there any trustees who wish to enter first round of debate? Are there any trustees who wish to enter second round of debate? Trustee Close, do you wish to close debate?
I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. In accordance with Section six-three of the Board Procedures Regulation, AR eighty-two twenty nineteen, under the Education Act, I will now ask Ms. Patricia Minor, the Corporate Secretary, to complete the first reading of Bylaw Two of 2024, the Ward System Bylaw, in its entirety for the record.
The Calgary Board of Education, Bylaw Two of 2024, a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education, to provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and to determine the boundaries of the wards, the Ward System Bylaw. Whereas it is deemed expedient by the Board of Trustees of the Calgary Board of Education, the Calgary School Division, that the election of trustees shall be by ward system in accordance with Section seventy-six, one A of the Education Act, and whereas the Board of Trustees of the Calgary Board of Education, the Calgary School Division, desires to replace Bylaw One of 2021, approved by the Board of Trustees on May twentieth, 2021, providing for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and submitted to the Minister of Education prior to May thirty-first, 2021, in accordance with Ministerial Order Number zero-zero-six slash twenty-twenty-one. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Calgary Board of Education, the Calgary School Division, enacts as follows. Part one, interpretation and definitions. One, this bylaw may be cited as the Ward System Bylaw. Two, sub one, in this bylaw, Act means the Education Act as a two, twenty, sorry, my apologies, twenty-twelve, Chapter E dash zero point three. Part two, election by wards. One, pursuant to Section seventy-six, one A of the Act, the Calgary Board of Education provides for the nomination and election of trustees by ward in the following manner. One trustee to be elected towards one and two, one trustee to be elected towards three and four, one trustee to be elected towards five and ten, one trustee to be elected towards six and seven, one trustee to be elected towards eight and nine, one trustee to be elected towards eleven and thirteen, and one trustee to be elected in wards twelve of fourteen. Number two, the boundaries of the wards for school purposes shall be as shown in the map attached as Schedule A heretofore, shaded areas excluded, and hereby incorporated as part of this bylaw, and the description of ward boundaries are set out in Schedule B attached heretofore and hereby incorporated as part of this bylaw. Number three, all schedules attached to this bylaw shall form part of this bylaw. In case of any discrepancy between Schedule A and Schedule B, the description of ward boundaries for school board elections purposes set out in Schedule B shall prevail. And three, this bylaw comes into force on the day it is passed. Schedule A is the City of Calgary Ward Boundaries Map, effective August 2023. Schedule B, description of ward boundaries for the Calgary Board of Education, effective August second, 2023. Ward one, north boundary, one hundred and forty-fourth Avenue Northwest. East boundary, eighty-fifth Street Northwest, one hundred and twelfth Avenue Northwest, Sixty-ninth Street Northwest, Sixty-ninth Street Alignment, Stony Trail Northwest, Crow Trail Trail Northwest. South boundary, Thirty-second Avenue Northwest, Bow River. East parcel boundary of eighteen-thirty, Sarsay Trail West. Sarsay Trail West, Trans-Canada Highway, Stony Trail Southwest, Second Avenue Southwest, west along the south boundary of Crestmont Community Township Road two forty-five Alignment. West boundary, Horizon View Road Southwest, one hundred and thirty-third Street Northwest, Forty-eighth Avenue Northwest. West boundary of Valley Ridge Community, Bow River, Haskane Community Boundary, one hundred and seventeenth Street Northwest, Twelve Mile Cooley Road Northwest, Country Hills Boulevard Northwest, Rocky Ridge Road Northwest. Ward two, north boundary. North boundary of zero-two K, north boundary of Glacier Ridge, north boundary of Amber Ridge, and then the north boundary of Moraine. East boundary, Fourteenth Street Northwest, Stony Trail Northwest, Shaganapi Trail Northwest, Country Hills Boulevard Northwest, Sarsay Trail Northwest. South boundary, Crow Trail Trail Northwest. West boundary, Stony Trail Northwest, Sixty-ninth Street Northwest Alignment, Sixty-ninth Street Northwest, one hundred and twelfth Avenue Northwest Alignment, and Eighty-fifth Street Northwest. Ward three, north boundary. North boundary of Carrington, north boundary of Livingston, Sixth Street Northeast, and one hundred and forty-fourth Avenue Northwest. East boundary, Deerfoot Trail Northeast. South boundary, Beddington Trail Northeast, Berkshire Boulevard Northwest, McEwen Drive, McEwen Glen Drive Northwest, McEwen Park View Northwest, north parcel boundary, Nosehill Park. West boundary, Shaganapi Trail Northwest, Stony Trail Northwest, Fourteenth Street Northwest. Ward four, north boundary. Country Hills Boulevard Northwest, Shaganapi Trail Northwest, north parcel boundary, Nosehill Park, McEwen Park View Northwest, McEwen Glen Drive Northwest, Berkshire Boulevard Northwest, Beddington Trail Northwest, Beddington Trail Northeast. East boundary, Deerfoot Trail Northeast. South boundary, Sixteenth Avenue Northeast, Edmonton Trail Northeast, Thirty-second Avenue Northeast, Thirty-second Avenue Northwest, Thirty-second Avenue Northwest Alignment, north parcel boundary of Confederation Park, Fourteenth Street Northwest, south parcel boundary of Confederation Park, Nineteenth Street Northwest, Canmore Road Northwest, Cochrane Road Northwest, Morley Trail Northwest, Charleswood Drive Northwest. West boundary, Crow Trail Trail Northwest, Sarsay Trail Northwest. Ward five. North boundary, city limits. East boundary, city limits. South boundary, Sixty-fourth Avenue Northeast Alignment, Sixty-fourth Avenue Northeast, Sixty-eighth Street Northeast, McKnight Boulevard Northeast, Forty-eighth Avenue Northeast Alignment, Forty-eighth Avenue Northeast. East slash north and west parcel boundary, twenty-six hundred, Forty-eighth Avenue Northeast. North parcel boundary, twenty-five twenty, Forty-eighth Avenue Northeast, Barlow Trail Northeast, McKnight Boulevard Northeast, Fifteenth Street Northeast Alignment, fifteen-thirty, Aviation Road Northeast. North and west parcel boundary, McKnight Boulevard Northeast Alignment and McKnight Boulevard Northeast. West boundary, Deerfoot Trail Northeast. Ward six, north boundary. Second Avenue Southwest, Stony Trail Southwest Alignment, Stony Trail Southwest, Sixteenth Avenue Northwest, Sarsay Trail West. East parcel boundary of eighteen-thirty, Sarsay Trail West, Bow River. East boundary, Twenty-ninth Street Southwest Alignment to North, Eighth Avenue Southwest, Spruce Drive Southwest, Bow Trail Southwest, Forty-eighth Street Southwest, Seventeenth Avenue Southwest, and Thirty-seventh Street Southwest. South boundary is city limits, and west boundary is city limits. Ward seven, north boundary. Thirty-second Avenue Northwest Alignment, Thirty-second Avenue Northwest, Charleswood Drive Northwest, Morley Trail Northwest, Cochrane Road Northwest, Canmore Road Northwest, Nineteenth Street Northwest, south parcel boundary of Confederation Park, Fourteenth Street Northwest, north parcel boundary of Confederation Park, Thirty-second Avenue Northwest Alignment, Thirty-second Avenue Northwest, and Thirty-second Avenue Northeast. East boundary is Edmonton Trail Northeast, Fourth Street Northeast, Bow River and Elbow River. South boundary, CP Rail tracks north of Tenth Avenue Southeast and Tenth Avenue Southwest, Fourteenth Street Southwest, and South Bank of Bow River. West boundary is South Bank of Bow River.
We will take a brief recess. Just wish to repeat, for Ward one, south boundary, there was a misstatement in the description of that. So south boundary for Ward one, Thirty-second Avenue Northwest, Bow River. East parcel boundary of eighteen-thirty, Sarsay Trail West, Sarsay Trail Southwest, Trans-Canada Highway, Stony Trail Southwest, Second Avenue Southwest, west along the south boundary of Crestmont Community Township Road two four five Alignment. Ward eight, north boundary. Bow River, Fourteenth Street Southwest, CP Rail tracks north of Tenth Avenue Southwest and Tenth Avenue Southeast. East boundary is Elbow River and MacLeod Trail South. South boundary, Fiftieth Avenue Southwest, Fiftieth Avenue Southwest Alignment, Fiftieth Avenue Southwest, Crow Trail Trail Southwest. Regional pathway, Fifty-four Avenue Southwest Alignment. East and north parcel boundary, two-nine-two-two, Peacekeepers Way Southwest, Peacekeepers Way Southwest, and Richmond Road Southwest, Rich, pardon me, Rich Road Southwest, and Glenmore Trail Southwest. West boundary, Thirty-seventh Street Southwest, Seventeenth Avenue Southwest, Forty-fifth Street Southwest, Bow Trail Southwest, Spruce Drive Southwest, Eighth Avenue Southwest, Twenty-ninth Street Southwest Alignment to North. Ward nine, north boundary. Sixteenth Avenue Northeast, Deerfoot Trail Northeast, Memorial Drive Southeast, Sixty-eight Street Southeast, CNR Tracks, Stony Trail Northeast, Sixteenth Avenue Northeast. East boundary, Eighty-four Street Southeast. North parcel boundary of one oh four, Eighty-fourth Street Southeast. North parcel boundary of three-three-three, One Hundred Street Southeast. North parcel boundary of One Hundred Street South. North parcel boundary of one-one-zero-zero, One Hundred Street Southeast. North parcel boundary, one-one-five, one-zero, Seventeenth Avenue Southeast. Range Road two eighty-four, Seventeenth Avenue Southeast, Ninety-second Street South, Thirty-fourth Avenue Southeast, and Eighty-fourth Street Southeast. South boundary is Glenmore Trail Southeast. West boundary is MacLeod Trail South, Elbow River, Bow River, Fourth Street Northeast, and Edmonton Trail Northeast. Ward ten, north boundary. McKnight Boulevard Northeast, McKnight Boulevard Northeast Alignment. Fifteen-thirty, Aviation Road Northeast. West and north parcel boundary. Fifteenth Street Northeast Alignment. West and North Parcel Boundary, Fifteenth Street Northeast Alignment, McKnight Boulevard Northeast, Barlow Trail Northeast. North Parcel Boundary, 2520, Forty Eighth Avenue Northeast. West/North and East Parcel Boundary, 2600, Forty Eighth Avenue Northeast, Forty Eighth Avenue Northeast, Forty Eighth Avenue Northeast Alignment, McKnight Boulevard Northeast, Sixty Eighth Street Northeast, Sixty Fourth Avenue Northeast, Sixty Fourth Avenue Northeast Alignment. West boundary is city limits. East boundary, east boundary is city limits. South boundary is Sixteenth Avenue Northeast, Stony Trail Northeast, CNR tracks, Sixty Eighth Street Southeast, Memorial Drive East. And west boundary is Deerfoot Trail Southeast and Northeast. Ward eleven. Glenmore Trail Southwest, Richard Road Southwest, Peacekeepers Way Southwest. North and East Parcel Boundary, 2922, Peacekeepers Way Southwest. Regional Pathway, Fifty Fourth Avenue Southwest Alignment, Crowchild Trail Southwest, Fiftieth Avenue Southwest, Fiftieth Avenue Alignment, Fiftieth Avenue Southwest, MacLeod Trail Southwest, Glenmore Trail Southwest and Southeast. East boundary, Twenty Four Street Southeast, Eighty Sixth Avenue Southeast Alignment, Twenty Four Street Southeast, Deerfoot Trail Southeast. South boundary, A Hundred and Thirtyth Avenue Southeast, Bow River, Deerfoot Trail Southeast, off ramp to southbound Deerfoot Trail from northbound Bow Bottom Trail. On ramp to Bow Bottom Trail from Anderson Road Southeast, Anderson Road Southeast and Southwest. West boundary, Thirty Seventh Street Southwest Alignment, Thirty Seventh Street Southwest. Ward twelve, north boundary is Glenmore Trail Southeast. East boundary, Eighty Four Street Southeast, A Hundred and Forty Sixth Avenue Southeast Alignment, A Hundred and Forty Sixth Avenue Southeast, A Hundred and Fourth Street Southeast, Stony Trail, Eighty Eighth Street Southeast. South boundary is city limits. West boundary is Bow River, Stony Trail Southeast, Deerfoot Trail Southeast, Twenty Four Street Southeast, Eighty Sixth Avenue Southeast Alignment and Twenty Four Street Southeast. Ward thirteen, north boundary. Anderson Road Alignment and Anderson Road Southwest. East boundary is MacLeod Trail South. South boundary is 210 Avenue Southwest Alignment, Sheriff King Grove Southwest Alignment, with sheriff needing two Fs, not just one. CP rail tracks and city limits. South boundary is city limits. Ward fourteen, north boundary. Anderson Road South, off ramp from Anderson Road to Bow Bottom Trail. Off ramp from north boundary Bow Bottom Trail to south boundary Deerfoot Trail. Bow River, A Hundred and Thirtyth Avenue Southeast Alignment, A Hundred and Thirtyth Avenue Southeast. East boundary, Deerfoot Trail, Stony Trail Southeast, Bow River and City Limits. South boundary is City Limits and west boundary is MacLeod Trail Southeast. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion to consider the approval of the first reading of Bylaw Two of 2024? Thank you, trustee Close.
Here we go, Chair Bolger. The Board of Trustees approves first reading of Bylaw Two of 2024 being a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education to provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and to determine the boundaries of the wards.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? Trustee May?
Thank you. I know when we increase our CBE boundaries, it's done so by approval by the Minister of Education. Do we have any areas that we've requested that have not been approved that could be potentially an issue when it comes to the election time in 2025?
Through the chair. In October, the board submitted a request for inclusion of the Lewisburg or the remaining portion of the Lewisburg community and of the remaining portion of the Huxley community. Unfortunately, those were not approved through a ministerial order in time. There was additional work that CBE had to do in order to resubmit those requests. And so, those are definitely areas. In addition to many other areas of the city, though, that extend beyond the CBE boundaries where Calgarians will be going to vote and they will not have an option to vote for a Calgary Board of Education trustee.
Any other questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves first reading of Bylaw Two of 2024 being a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education to provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and to determine the boundaries of the wards. Trustee Close, would you please open debate?
And thank you, trustee May, for asking that question to provide clarity of what we have in front of us. And also, we have a map that shows some of the new boundaries that are new areas that have been now included within the CBE boundaries.
Anyone else wishing to enter first round? Anyone wishing to enter second round of debate? Trustee May?
I'd like to share that the motions in front of us today are self-explanatory, but in the same context, quite complex regarding the specific boundaries for each ward. I also find the map quite helpful. I think it helps to clarify what's CBE boundary and what's city boundary and really allow the understanding that we have 14 city wards in Calgary and that they're represented by seven CBE trustees. I'm happy that this meets our obligations under the Education Act and provide clarity regarding the difference in boundaries. And I think this also is a signal to the public that we are quickly moving into an election season. And I would emphasize that putting your name forward as a candidate is a huge responsibility and also a great opportunity to serve the public and represent public education.
Anyone else wishing to enter second round of debate? Trustee Close, do you wish to close debate? She says no. I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion to proceed to second reading of Bylaw Two of 2024? Thank you, trustee Close.
That the Board of Trustees authorize Bylaw Two of 2024 be given second reading.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees authorize Bylaw Two of 2024 be given second reading. Trustee Close, would you please open debate?
This one is even more self-explanatory. It's just asking us whether we're ready to authorize that the bylaw be given second reading.
Any further debate?
To confirm, you're asking about entering first round?
I believe I am, yes.
Anyone wishing to enter second round? Trustee Close, would you please close debate?
Nothing further to add, thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. In accordance with Section 6.3 of the Board Procedures Regulation, AR 822019, under the Education Act, I will now ask Ms. Patricia Minor, the Corporate Secretary, to complete the second read of Bylaw Two of 2024, the Ward System Bylaw, for the record.
Calgary Board of Education, Bylaw Two of 2024, a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education to provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and to determine the boundaries of the wards, the Ward System Bylaw. I'm now going to repeat a few of the ward descriptions just to make sure that they're correct on the record. For Ward six, east boundary. To confirm, the description is Twenty Ninth Street Southwest Alignment to North, Eighth Avenue Southwest, Spruce Drive Southwest, Bow Trail Southwest, Forty Fifth Street Southwest, Seventeenth Avenue Southwest and Thirty Seventh Street Southwest. On Ward eight, south boundary. Fiftieth Avenue Southwest, Fiftieth Avenue Southwest Alignment, Fiftieth Avenue Southwest, Crowchild Trail Southwest, Regional Pathway, Fifty Fourth Avenue Southwest Alignment. East and North Parcel Boundary, 2922, Peacekeepers Way Southwest, Peacekeepers Way Southwest, Richard Road Southwest and Glenmore Trail Southwest. And then on Ward thirteen, west boundary is city limits.
Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion to consider the approval of the second reading of Bylaw Two of 2024? Trustee Close?
Yes, thank you. That the Board of Trustees approves second reading of Bylaw Two of 2024 being a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education to provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and to determine the boundaries of the wards.
Trustees, do we have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves second reading of Bylaw Two of 2024 being a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education to provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and to determine the boundaries of the wards. Trustee Close, would you please open debate?
I would just simply like to echo and thank trustee May for her debate for first reading and echo her remarks. Thank you.
Are there any trustees who wish to enter first round of debate? Trustee Hack?
Although this is procedural and has to be approved before the end of December, I do appreciate the clarity and the reading out of streets for any of those who are looking to run for trustee. I know that some of them get a little messy with those jagged lines. So, I appreciate that. I just also appreciate the clarity on that a lot of this looks very similar to the last election with some minor tweaks, but that trustees will be having the same. So, one and two, three and four, five and 10, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for first round of debate? Anyone for second round of debate? Trustee Close, do you wish to close debate? I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion to proceed to third reading of Bylaw Number Two of 2024? Trustee Bukadinovich?
I move that in accordance with Section 6-2 of the Board Procedure Regulation, AR 822019, under the Education Act, the Board of Trustees authorizes Bylaw Two of 2024 be given third reading.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that in accordance with Section 6.2 of the Board Procedure Regulation, AR 822019, under the Education Act, the Board of Trustees authorizes Bylaw Two of 2024 be given third reading. Trustee Bukadinovich, would you please open debate?
Well, I agreed to move this motion because we needed movers for the motions. But I am weighing right now how I will vote because I am convinced that, I mean, I'm concerned, not convinced, but concerned that I'm not always seeing a commitment to taking time needed to fully think things through and think through policy implications and think through our decisions. And so, I'm worried that we're missing something here. And because I think it is an important value for us to take the time needed to mull over the decisions that we make. I think that this piece in our procedures where third reading can occur on another day, I think it has value in terms of allowing us to sleep on it, basically, to think about, to think through what are the other aspects of an issue that we need to consider. So, I'm weighing how I will vote on this motion and I'm curious to hear from others.
Any trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Trustee May?
I think I'm here what trustee Hack had said earlier about how there isn't a huge change to boundaries. And so, it isn't a giant change to expectations for trustees or potential trustees in their workload or what to expect. So, I think three readings is acceptable in this situation because it is quite straightforward. I think if we were, you know, looking at changing who gets what wards and/or not aligning to city bylaws or, sorry, not aligning to city wards, I think it'd be a bigger conversation. But I think it is quite straightforward. And so, I am confident in having third reading occur today.
I might just add in here that I appreciate that a reading of a bylaw in succession on a single day can be, you know, problematic without time to contemplate if it is perhaps a contentious issue. And I feel that this is a fairly straightforward issue to align with the city of Calgary and ongoing elections. And as mentioned, there's not significant changes to ward boundaries. There's no contemplation of trustees having more wards, other wards, adding wards, that sort of thing. So, I'm comfortable with having the third reading today. Trustee Close?
I totally understand, you know, why we split up the readings of bylaws and why it has to be a unanimous vote in order to provide three readings in one sitting. I think this is one bylaw that is an example of expediency. Two things come through my mind if we do not support unanimous vote in approving third reading is that we would have to set up a meeting before the end of December in order to contemplate this because we are required under the Education Act to submit it by a deadline. And I'm not of the mind of contemplating or entertaining a conversation around whether we structure ourselves differently by wards. I support that we align ourselves with the city of Calgary ward boundaries and that we do our very best.
and that we do our very best to make sure that CBE boundaries are as close as possible to being aligned, but obviously a struggle in terms of how development goes. So I would worry as far as not supporting unanimous consent for third reading for something as technical as this that's before us.
Any other trustees for first round? Anyone wishing to enter second round of debate? Trustee Hack?
I also thought this is very straightforward, a procedural reading, doing the third reading all in one. I haven't heard anybody speak against the ward system by the report that we have before us. So I guess I'm trying to figure out why the vote wouldn't be unanimous in supporting the ward bylaw changes.
Thank you. Anyone else for second round? Trustee Bukadinovich, do you wish to close debate?
Well, therein lies the nub, that we haven't heard a lot of pros and cons. And so this is where having additional time, and I recognize that we would have to book an additional meeting before December 31st, but this is what we've signed up for, to be at the back and call of citizens. This would allow a few extra days for us to contemplate and maybe we might have more questions come up once people have mulled over what they've heard during the first and second round.
I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion?
I wonder, could we have a pause, please? I just feel like I do need...
Sure, let's call a quick recess. Okay, we'll resume our meeting here. And I will call the question. Those in favor of the motion? Thank you very much. That is carried unanimously. In accordance with Section 6.3 of the Board Procedures Regulation, AR 82/2019, under the Education Act, I will now ask Ms. Trish Minor, the Corporate Secretary, to complete the third read of Bylaw 2 of 2024, the Ward Bylaw System, for the record.
Calgary Board of Education, Bylaw 2 of 2024, a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education to provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and to determine the boundaries of the wards, the wards system by law. And I have to reread one boundary is for Ward 8, South Boundary. Hopefully I can get it right this time. 8th, or not 8th, 50th Avenue, southwest, 50th Avenue, southwest alignment, 50th Avenue, southwest, Crowchild Trail, southwest, Regional Pathway, 54th Avenue, southwest alignment, East and North Parcel Boundary, 2922, Peacekeepers Way, southwest, Peacekeepers Way, southwest, Richard Road, southwest, and Glenmore Trail, southwest.
Thank you. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion to consider the approval of the third reading of Bylaw 2 of 2024? Trustee Bukadinovich?
I move that the Board of Trustees approves third reading of Bylaw 2 of 2024, being a bylaw of, sorry, is this Bylaw 1?
It's 2, yeah.
It's Bylaw 2? We don't have a Bylaw 1?
Through the chair, Bylaw 1 of 2024 is your police information check or bylaw that we will be considering after the completion of this item on the agenda?
Point of order?
Yes.
If the Board of Trustees were to choose to defer that decision today and not pass one before December 31st, 2024, then we would have a Bylaw 2 numbered without a Bylaw 1. So would it possibly make sense to move to rename this Bylaw 1?
I'll defer to our Corporate Secretary.
I don't believe, given the nature of the order in which you consider, sorry, through the chair, Bylaw number 1 was the first bylaw read, even though the completion hasn't been determined on that, it will be on the record as being the Bylaw number 1. Whether the motion fails, if the motion fails on third reading and the bylaw doesn't pass, it was still Bylaw 1 of 2024 that you considered it would be considered a failed bylaw. This is why that's, the current bylaw in front of you is dated Bylaw 2 of 2024.
Trustee Bukadinovich, go ahead.
So then I move that the Board of Trustees approves third reading of Bylaw 2 of 2024, being a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education to provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and to determine the boundaries of the wards.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves third reading of Bylaw 2 of 2024, being a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education to provide for the nomination and election of trustees by wards and to determine the boundaries of the wards. Trustee Bukadinovich, would you please open debate?
I have nothing to add to what's already said. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any trustees who wish to enter first round of debate? Anyone is interested in entering second round of debate? Trustee Bukadinovich, do you wish to close debate?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is carried unanimously. Thank you. Next on our agenda is item 8.4, Third Reading of the Bylaw to Acquire Police Information Checks for Trustee Candidate Nominations. First and second reading of the bylaw to acquire police information checks for trustee candidate nominations were considered at the December 16th, 2024 Special Public Board Meeting. This matter is on today's agenda to consider third reading of the bylaw. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion to proceed to third reading of Bylaw 1 of 2024? Trustee Bukadinovich?
I move to postpone consideration of the motion to approve third reading of Bylaw 1 of 2024, being a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education to require police information checks for trustee candidate nominations. Indefinitely.
We will briefly recess. We will reconvene. Do trustees have any questions or comments about the postponement motion? The motion on the floor is to postpone the consideration of the motion to approve third reading of Bylaw 1 of 2024, being a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education to acquire police information checks for trustee candidate nominations indefinitely. Trustee Bukadinovich, do you wish to open debate?
Yes, thank you. I would like the board to consider very carefully postponing the consideration of this motion. It should give us great pause whenever there is an issue that attracts a wide variety of opinions. And this issue clearly does, not just from trustees, but also from members of the public. We heard a public comment earlier today, but I'm also talking about, you know, which is what people on the street have been saying to me about this issue. Most of the feedback I've been hearing is strongly against and people concerned about this turning into a slippery slope. Because of the controversy surrounding this issue, I think that we would get great value from asking for analysis of this issue prior to making decision. I would like us to think about in the new year in 2025, I'd like us to have a conversation about whether we should ask the administration to bring us a report that tells us what academic journals have published on this issue and what do they say? What are the pros and the cons of having, of creating a requirement of a police information check that is posted publicly for candidates to elected office? I would also appreciate if an analysis could look at case studies, what is happening in other jurisdictions or in other orders of government when they've considered, have other orders of governments implemented this or other governments around the world? And are there any risks to the democratic process and are there benefits and do the benefits outweigh the challenges? There are lots, there is a lot that is unclear. And when there's that much that's unclear, to me, it's a red flag. And I'm, so I'm just asking, like, let's postpone consideration of this motion. And you know what? Maybe with a report that analyzes the issue, I might come around, I mean, I'm always open to issues. I could see myself coming around to saying, oh, yes, I vote in favor of this. But right now, I just don't have that information. And so I'm asking my fellow trustees to please consider supporting this motion that I've put forward, to postpone consideration of the motion. It's not a no, it's just a, let's think about it and let's have a discussion about whether we'd like to receive a report that analyzes how this is working in other places and what are the case studies and what are the pros and cons? Because we haven't received that right now.
Thank you. Are there any trustees wishing to enter first round of debate? Trustee May?
A similar postponement motion was presented during yesterday's approval of the first reading of Bylaw 1. And the Board of Trustees has taken this matter seriously, as well as given reflective time, which is why a third reading is before us today. There was ample opportunity to debate, and that was exercised yesterday, and I feel expect the opportunity to be utilized today. I'm not in favor of supporting this postponement motion.
Anyone else interested in entering first round? Anyone interested in entering second round of debate? I'll call the question. Those, oh, sorry, Susan, Trustee Bukadinovich, she can close debate.
Yeah, I mean, to me, a debate on the issue is nowhere near the same level of due diligence as asking for information, to ask for a report that presents the pros and cons and the challenges and the benefits of doing something that is this controversial. So the debate comes at the end, like, the debate is something, in order to be useful, the debate is something that comes at the end after we've had the opportunity to get information. Then we discuss whether or not we disagree with it. Whereas here, we're taking something that is very controversial. It is very controversial. I know that at times it seems like it's only me and others are in favor, but we know, looking around our province, that there are other trustees who see great danger from forcing anyone who wants to consider to run for this office to publicly provide their police information checks. So it's not just me. And I know from speaking with members of the public that there are other people who find this very controversial and a dangerous direction to take for a body that's supposed to be part of our democratic system. So because of the red flags, I think it's really important to get information, not just debate from people, but also debate that's based on information. So I'm again urging my fellow trustees to please consider, again, it's not voting against this idea, it's just saying, let's postpone consideration so we can have a conversation in the new year about whether we would like to ask the administration to bring us a report that analyzes this.
Thank you, Trustee Bukadinovich. I'll call the question. Those in favor of the postponement motion? That is Trustee Bukadinovich in favor. Those opposed? That is Trustee May, Trustee Hack, Trustee Close, and Trustee Bulger. So that motion fails. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion to proceed with third reading of Bylaw 1 of 2024? Trustee Bukadinovich?
If we're going ahead with this, then pursuant to Section N-10-J of the Board Meeting Procedures, I move that the Board of Trustees authorizes that no trustee shall speak more than twice for five minutes on the motions to be considered on the bylaw to require police information checks for trustee candidate nominations.
Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that pursuant to Section N-10-J of the Board Meeting Procedures, the Board of Trustees authorizes that no trustee shall speak more than twice for five minutes on the motions to be considered on the bylaw to require police information checks for trustee candidate nominations. Trustee Bukadinovich, would you please open debate?
Well, I believe trustees and administration are aware that the heart of this motion is that it increases the speaking time, debate time allowed for trustees from three minutes to five minutes. So that's actually what's being proposed with this motion. I'm just stating that for clarity of people in the room as well as for clarity of anyone watching this online through YouTube. And if you are watching this online and on YouTube, please hit like and subscribe.
Are there any trustees who wish to enter first round of debate? Trustee Hack?
I'm inclined to vote against this motion because I only required the three minutes as predicted previously. So I do not require the five minutes.
Trustee May?
I'm inclined to vote in favor of the motion. While I personally do not require the additional time, I think where possible, it is within our right to extend. And if we have a trustee who feels that they need additional time to share their concerns and voice their opinion, that we give that opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Trustee Close?
For the same rationale, I would likely vote in favor, although I do not need the five minutes for personal use.
I would also add that I don't need the time. And given the suggestion of postponement to learn more information...
And given the suggestion of postponement to learn more information and gain more research and background information on having candidates have police information checks, I'm not sure what more there is to debate, given that that would seem the reason to do so, because much of it we have heard before. That is it. Trustee Bukadinovich, do you wish to close debate? Sorry. Anyone wishing to enter second round of debate? Trustee Hack?
Appreciate the, my colleagues pointing out the fact that others do need more time on this. And if we do allow this, this ensures that everybody's had an opportunity to be heard, consensus can be made, and then we can go forward with a decision without limiting trustees. So I am inclined in favor.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to enter second round? I'll call the, or sorry, trustee Bukadinovich, do you wish to close debate?
I'm hoping that people will vote in favor because I think it is important to allow for fulsome debate on this topic.
I'll call the question, those in favor of the motion. That is carried unanimously. Is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion to proceed to third reading of Bylaw 1 of 2024? Trustee Hack?
That in accordance with Section 6.2 of the Board Procedure Regulations, AR-82/2019, under the Education Act, the Board of Trustees authorizes Bylaw 1 of 2024 be given a third reading.
Do trustees have any question about the motion? The motion on the floor is that in accordance with Section 6.2 of the Board Procedure Regulation, AR-82/2019, under the Education Act, the Board of Trustees authorizes Bylaw 1 of 2024 be given third reading. Trustee Hack, would you please open debate?
I know border, sorry, or point of questionable procedure. Just before we enter into debate, is there an opportunity to ask questions? Because I have thought of additional questions since last night.
The questions are only on the motion? The opportunity for questions was yesterday.
So there isn't an opportunity for questions before third reading?
Correct.
Even though the benefit of having extra time is to think of, to mull over what people have said and to think of extra questions? I have a question here from a community member, actually, who was listening yesterday.
We'll briefly recess. We will reconvene the meeting. Trustee Bukadinovich?
I have a point of information, if I may.
Go ahead.
How long from when a person submits a police information check to the Calgary Police Services does it take to get it back? So how many weeks does it take? Are there any adverse circumstances where it's late? Would it be possible for anyone, if the Board of Trustees were to vote in favor of this bylaw today? If somebody rushed out to the Calgary Police Services today, would they be able to file nomination papers on January 2nd, when the nomination period opens? What is the earliest that a trustee would be able to file nominations papers? And the last day, what is the last day for a potential candidate to get a police information check in order to receive the results back in time before the nomination day closes? Are we okay with effectively?
One question.
Oh, this is, this was all like, this was somebody who had sent me all of these, the concern about shortening the time period can make.
So perhaps that's the bottom question. Can you reframe or?
Well, no, it was all these, these are, like, these are all very.
Timing issues.
They're relevant to the question at hand, and they're all related to, this person was wondering if we're effectively shortening the time people can make to make the decision to run. And also, how will we communicate to candidates that they need to be paying attention not to the actual closing day of nominations, but the date by which they need the police information check in order to meet that deadline?
Through the chairs. So I think there was about eight or nine questions, so I'm going to do my best from memory to respond to them. So, working backwards, the individual who files candidate papers can do so, and I'm going to confirm with the Corporate Secretary, up until September 24th?
22nd is the last date of file nomination.
2024. And the pick check can be effective within any six-month period prior to that date. So it could theoretically have been secured a week before, a day before, and still be a valid pick check because it's within six months prior to the filing of the nomination papers. In terms of CPS processing time, our experience as an employer of over 15,000 employees with 9,000 of them requiring mandatory pick checks, it's about a two- to three-week processing time at this current time. There can be fluctuations in those processing times, but we generally are made aware if they go north of three weeks. So new hires, experientially, about two weeks is the average. And I don't remember the rest, unfortunately, but I think I've covered a good chunk of the process that you were driving at, underlying it.
Follow-up? Yes, but if somebody went on September 21st and got a police information check, if they submitted the paperwork, they wouldn't actually receive the results. So do candidates have to submit, like, I don't know, is there a receipt? Do they submit, in order to be able to submit their nomination papers, do they just have to submit the receipt that they've done it and it's in the mail and I'll get back to you after September 22nd with the product? Or would they have to have made that final decision about whether or not they will run at least three weeks prior to September 22nd in order to ensure that they can, they actually have the results in hand? Because it's not, you can't just go to the police, Calgary Police, and get it, like, as you mentioned.
So the person would be required to submit a valid pick, which is the outcome, not the proof of doing, but the actual outcome of doing, when they file their nomination papers. Whether they file their nomination papers on January 1 or they file them on September 22nd, they would need to have a valid pick. That would be the outcome. And nomination periods are from January, sorry, January and?
January 2nd for the nomination.
Yeah, January 2nd.
Period is January 2nd to September 22nd.
Thank you, Corporate Secretary.
Thank you very much. All right, we will continue with our debate. We have a motion on the floor. Trustee Hack, we'd like to open debate.
All right, round two of this motion, so let's try it one more time. Yesterday, when voting on this matter, we were voting to have it read a third time at the same meeting as the first two readings, which required unanimous consent. As this is a separate meeting from yesterday's meeting, it only requires a majority vote to pass. So with as much gusto as my first attempt, I urge trustees to allow a third reading to take place.
Are there any trustees who wish to enter first round of debate? Any trustees wishing to enter second round of debate? Oh, first, trustee Bukadinovich?
Point of information first. I just got lost in the proceedings. Are we debating the actual motion now or debating whether to do third reading of the motion?
Just we're not actually debating the motion yet.
The motion on the floor is that in accordance with Section 6.2 of the Board Procedure Regulation, AR-82/2019, under the Education Act, the Board of Trustees authorizes Bylaw 1 of 2024 be given third reading. Yeah, it is for a third reading, not for approval of third reading. So is there anyone who wishes to enter first round of debate? Second round of debate? Trustee Hack, do you wish to close debate?
Nothing further to add, thank you.
Thank you. I'll call the question, those in favor of the motion. Those, trustee May, trustee Hack, trustee Close, trustee Bolger. Those opposed? Trustee Bukadinovich is opposed. That motion is carried. In accordance with Section 6.3 of the Board Procedures Regulation, AR-82/2019, under the Education Act, I will now ask Ms. Patricia Minor, the Corporate Secretary, to complete the third read Bylaw Number 1 of 2024, the Police Information Check Bylaw for the record.
Calgary Board of Education, Bylaw 1 of 2024. A bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education to require police information checks for trustee candidate nominations. Police Information Check Bylaw.
Is there a trustee who wishes to bring a motion to consider the approval of the third reading of Bylaw Number 1 of 2024? Trustee Hack?
I'd like to move that the Board of Trustees approves the third reading of Bylaw 1 of 2024, being a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education to require police information checks for trustee candidate nominations.
Do trustees have any question about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves third reading of Bylaw 1 of 2024, being a bylaw of the Calgary Board of Education to require police information checks for trustee candidate nominations. Trustee Hack, would you please open debate?
As a continuation from yesterday, I am still leaning in favor of voting for this bylaw to come in effect. Trustees have had ample time to consider the reasons for and against, and I appreciate the debate that has already taken place. It's a reasonable action to require candidates when from that list, Calgarians are choosing who to entrust with making policy and governance decisions on behalf of over 142,000 students and their families. We want sound judgment from those at the top, and this is just one more way.
Point, sorry.
Public trust.
Point of?
In the very important role that we have in public education, I urge my fellow trustees to pass this motion because then it's up to the public. What the public does with this information will be up to them, but to stop that information from even being asked for in the first place, I believe is disingenuous to our role as trustees when at the CBE we say students come first and that public education serves the common good. I truly believe that not everyone is going to care, but to many parents who are entrusting us to educate their children, it will likely matter a great deal. I urge my fellow trustees to not stand in the way of public trust and accountability and to allow the public to make a determination if it matters to them as individual voters.
Trustee Bukadinovich?
Yeah, I have a point of order. The trustee just said that implied that only people who don't have anything on their criminal record would be of sound judgment, which completely undermines the system upon which justice is based in this country. We have a system that is based on the concept that there's a possibility to reform, to be
Trustee Bukadinovich, this sounds like a part of your debate that could be.
It is not. I'm objecting to trustee Hack's.
Opinion.
Implication that it's an indication of whether or not somebody has sound judgment. We could have staff members who have.
Can we please have the chair make a decision on whether or not that was a point of order by trustee Bukadinovich?
Yeah, I would, trustee Hack has the opportunity to say what she would like to say within debate, as do you. And so I rule down your point of order. Is there someone who wishes to enter first round of debate? Trustee Bukadinovich?
I am urging this board to vote against this motion, and if that fails, then I urge the next board to consider bringing forward a motion to strike down this bylaw. First of all, the academic literature does talk about the risk of a slippery slope, where today you're publicly listing the police information checks of election candidates, then tomorrow you're publishing their medical records, then their tax returns, then their residential addresses, and so on. I have a chill down my spine when I think about how wrong it is for us to head down this slippery slope of demanding that people who want to run for public office, which is a public service, that we demand that they publicly share the information contained in their police information checks, not just do a police information check, because that is fairly common in our world. There's lots of roles that require a police information check. And it is, you know, an excellent question that why don't trustees who have been elected have to do, why don't we have to do police information checks? It's a fair question. But for trustee candidates, in order to be able to even run, to have to publicly share that information, to me, that is unprecedented, and we need to carefully think about going down that path. There's too much that is unknown about the risks, the challenges, and the potential unintended consequences of passing this bylaw. I'm still not clear, after listening to debate, what problem we're trying to solve. I'm still not clear whether the proposed solution solves the problem. I still don't have the information I need to know why MP candidates never have to submit police information checks or MLA candidates in order to run for office. And I still go back to the fact that our liberal democratic system is precious. It has only existed for a few hundred years, and I think it's dangerous for us to add any barrier to running for office without first carefully reviewing the research that is currently available about the harms of introducing police information checks as part of the candidate nomination package. I feel as a board, I'm concerned that we are displaying a lack of curiosity about who has thoroughly examined this idea and what they've said. And I have heard, if I can recall the wording correctly, trustees around this table asserting that making candidates' police information checks publicly would somehow emphasize the integrity of candidates and promote trust. But I have serious concerns that it will do the opposite. Everything I read on this topic tells me that this could end up undermining the integrity of the electoral process and promoting distrust. If we were to pass this bylaw, I feel the fear that we'd be sending the message that what matters in an election campaign is the worst social media post you could dig up and look at somebody's criminal record check and focus on the past things that have been said or done, rather than focusing on the current policy debate at hand. And the other reason I urge you to vote against this bylaw is because democracy serves best when only the barriers that absolutely need to be there are put in place as guardrails. At the end of November, I read a thought-provoking article about how people on both the left-wing and right-wing political fringes are dismantling liberal democracies. I read about how populists often attack the integrity of elections to tilt the playing field in their favor, using tactics that weaken public trust in electoral systems while consolidating power for the ruling party. And I have fears that that's what we're playing into, that will consolidate power for trustee incumbents who are running for elections, because it is a known fact that incumbents have an easier time getting reelected, while attacking the integrity of anyone who dares to run against an incumbent. This bylaw will create one more barrier that will make it that much harder for people to run for election, and I would find it very troubling and disappointing to be a member of the board that made it harder for people to run for public office. It isn't a harmless change. It does hurt the board and the democratic process when we add additional hurdles that potential candidates have to jump over. The third reason why I urge you to vote against this bylaw is because it places emphasis on the purity or perfection of a candidate rather than on why they are running. This, and I see I'm running out of time, but, sorry. This, and I see I'm running out of time, but, sorry. I'm trying to turn some of my questions into debate. It's frustrating.
Thank you. Trustees wishing to enter first round? Trustee May?
Yesterday, as a board in our special meeting, we had the opportunity to ask many questions regarding the bylaw report to administration, as well as enter many rounds of vigorous debate. While I may be restating my debates from yesterday, I do feel they are of importance to restate. We are debating this bylaw because we now have the opportunity to use such a lever with changes to the Local Authorities' Election Act through the Municipal Affairs Statutes Amendment Act, and the requirement to pass such a bylaw before December 31st for the upcoming October 20th, 2025 municipal election. While we may not have a detailed report, as requested by trustee Bukadinovich, that includes local, provincial, and national data and information, we do have an internal administrative regulation that requires criminal record checks for our employees and volunteers within the system. Holding public office, we are responsible for overseeing the largest K-12 school board in Western Canada, which includes over one hundred and forty-three thousand students and over sixteen thousand staff. There is an assumption in the public sphere that we comply to the same requirements at administrative regulations. And frankly, the same standards for many organizations dealing with vulnerable youth and persons. We do have internal documents.
Point of order? Trustee Bukadinovich? I'm not familiar with the same standard of publicly releasing police information checks. So I don't think it's fair to say that.
Carry on. Trustee May?
I can withdraw that statement if she prefers. We do have internal documents that guide our actions as a trustee, specifically our own GC7 that states the board and trustees will conduct themselves lawfully with integrity and high ethical standards. It also states that.
Right, point of order? Are we implying that people who have something on their criminal record wouldn't not be conducting themselves lawfully and with high ethical standards?
Well, I think we've already said that people can articulate what they would like in their debate, and you're welcome to reflect on that in yours. So we'll rule that out of order.
I will continue, as I do not feel that my statement violated any board meeting procedures at this time. It also states that trustees shall model the behaviors expected of employees and students to build confidence and credibility. We are entrusted by the public, and they expect us to guide our system based on Calgarians' values and to provide working environments that are safe, positive, inclusive, equitable, and welcoming. This bylaw is our opportunity to reflect upon our own governance and how we lead and represent our organization. To me, it frankly just makes sense and common sense to pass this bylaw. During the first and second approval debate, I encouraged my fellow trustees to reflect upon other school boards within Alberta who have decided to enact this bylaw. Locally, Calgary Catholic School Division and provincially, P. Swapity, have decided to include criminal record check. The city of Calgary will be addressing a similar bylaw today after unanimous amendment to do so passed last month at their meeting regarding preparations for the 2025 general election. Having our requirements be concurrent with other organizations within Calgary makes sense, and will be clear for those to do research on their candidates and clear why they cast their ballot. I believe yesterday, we had a fulsome debate and discussion of values regarding candidates and for them to demonstrate what their values are and what they would be to public education, and not to be weaponizing a criminal record check. The associated costs to include a criminal background check are minimal, and running for office in any capacity is not a cheap endeavor, but a valuable one. I would again encourage trustees to vote in favor, as we are a public entity, and more specifically, a public entity whose sole mandate is education of underage citizens.
Thank you, trustee May. Anyone else wishing to enter first round of debate?
I have a point of information.
Yes?
Trustee May is saying that there's an expectation that trustees model the behavior expected of employees. Sure, yes. How does this have to do with? Like, what is the connection between a public criminal record check? And I, it's making an implication.
We can't engage in one-on-one debate, but you're certainly welcome to bring it up in your own debate. Are there any trustees wishing to enter first round? Trustee Close?
I will be brief. As I mentioned yesterday, what, what compels me to support this bylaw is, is providing the electorate with more information about the background of candidates for the board. I think it is demonstrating leadership and culture and values and ethical behavior, and it's modeling values, more importantly, related to respect, transparency, and openness. I mentioned yesterday, it's not us to judge. And I also reiterated the importance of consistency as a value. And I think it is compelling that the city of Calgary is, is exploring this. And that Calgary Catholic has already approved their bylaw.
Thank you. Any trustees wishing to enter second round of debate? Trustee Bukadinovich?
I feel deeply uncomfortable sitting in this room and hearing how people with criminal records are being described. We could have people sitting in this room or listening online who have something on their criminal records, and they're, they're being described as people who's, who have unethical behavior and wouldn't be able to model leadership and like basically unsuited for the Calgary Board of Education. So I just feel like we need to be a bit mindful of who might be listening. I feel like I'm like the last trustee left today who believes in human beings, who believes in hope, who believes in redemption, who believes that people can learn from things. I'm, I'm finding this very troubling, that I am the only person who sees the incredible risk of heading down this path of forcing people who are interested in running for public office to provide a publicly available police information check, that we don't have a respect for privacy and a separation between a person's ability to be an excellent trustee potentially and, and their private life. And I'm not seeing the connection, because the police information check would not disqualify a candidate. We, I mean, we know, we, we, we know of people who are prominent, people who have criminal records, and they're still elected. So it's not like, I, I'm just, the, the pieces are not connecting here. Like, do you think somebody with a criminal record who's, 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 you know, like, who knows how many years ago that was and what the criminal record for? Like, you're saying that they are unethical, but then, like, people elect them anyway. So once they're elected, they're ethical? It's just like the, the, the connection, I just can't even wade through, wade through this. This is a public office, and as a public office, we are open to the scrutiny of the public and the public that put us here. I do want scrutiny, but I want us to be talking about the real issues. I want us to be talking about, do candidates believe in public education? Do candidates believe, send their own kids to public schools? Do candidates know how to read financial statements? Have they served on a board before? Like, that's what we should be asking candidates, not whether or not there's anything on their criminal record check. And I, I don't like this idea that we should be driving towards this, like, gotcha politics, like, like, let's just find something in somebody's past and dig the, dig it up, and then maybe I can win an election, and then somebody else will lose the election. It's like we're doubling down on these hectoring feel-bad vibes that have inundated our world. And I've, I've heard my fellow trustees say that trustee candidates, so not trustees, because we're talking about trustee candidates here, not trustees, trustee candidates should be an example to others. An example of what? And who decides who's somebody an example? When we're scrutinizing candidates, I want somebody who is smart, who asks good questions, who cares. I'm not looking for a saint. I'm looking for a human being. And this barrier that we're considering putting in will make it harder for all candidates equally, because it will narrow this period in which candidate papers can be submitted. It will add one more step that needs to be done, which will give people, more people pause about whether or not they want to run. I'm deeply, I'm just deeply troubled by this.
Is there any other trustees wishing to enter second round of debate? Trustee May?
Confirming second round? Okay. I will keep my second round debate short, as I have not been afforded the same opportunity as my fellow trustees to debate and voice opinions without interruptions or point of orders or point of informations being raised. So in the end, I believe this is a good decision and a common sense decision, and one in which I'm hopeful my fellow trustees will vote in favor for.
Thank you, trustee May. Anyone else wishing to enter second round? I'll just add in that having high expectations for those seeking office of the Board of Trustees is not unreasonable. And although there may not be a specific problem, per se, that we're trying to solve, it doesn't discount the potential value in bringing this bylaw forward so that the electorate is informed in its decision-making. This is simply one more piece of information that voters can use in making the determination as to who they cast their vote for. We hope they're also assessing if candidates value public education, if they can effectively and collaboratively work with a board made up of their fellow trustees, and whether or not they have an understanding of policy governance and the overall structure of the CBE. This bylaw, as mentioned, doesn't preclude candidates from running for office, nor from being elected. Anyone else for second round? Trustee Hack, do you wish to close?
I do. Thank you. The tone from the top matters. I support adding this as something candidates must provide as part of their nomination package. I believe that requiring a criminal record check for public office is a necessary step to protect the integrity of our institutions and public trust. Trustees are often granted access to sensitive information, critical resources, and decisions. A police information check may be a part of what proves to the public that a trustee candidate has no history of behavior that could compromise their ability to handle these responsibilities with care and integrity. I want to be perfectly clear that having something show up on a police record check does not automatically disqualify a candidate. Instead, it creates an opportunity for evaluation. It allows the public to assess whether an individual has demonstrated good character and whether their past actions align with their values that they expected of someone serving in public office. After all, accountability and personal growth are key elements of public service. Finally, while democracy rightly values participation, a police record check upholds basic standards of character and accountability. It reassures the public that those elected to serve have earned their trust. And trust is earned. It's not freely given, especially for elected officials. By doing so, we safeguard the electoral process and the reputation of our governance systems. Requiring a criminal record check is not about exclusion. It's about ensuring that the public office remains a position of trust, responsibility, and integrity. It balances fairness with the need to protect the interests of the public and the integrity of our democracy. The public deserves to know. They deserve transparency, and they deserve to trust in their trustee. I urge trustees to vote in favor of this motion today.
Thank you, trustee Hack. I'll call the question. Those in favor of the motion? That is trustee May, trustee Hack, trustee Close, trustee Bolger. Those opposed? Trustee Bukadinovich, that is, is opposed. That motion is carried. That brings us to the consent agenda of our meeting. All items not removed from the consent agenda will be deemed to be approved with the agenda. This concludes the public portion of today's agenda. The board has four labor, four land, and five strategic planning matters to deal with in private. I would like to thank all of you who joined us for the meeting. Our next public board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 14th, 2025.